Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, September 27th, 2022. This is the Hanson Selectments Meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And Mrs. Ray, may I prevail upon you to read the announcements?
We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Bylaw Review Committee and Highway Study Committee. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, or by calling the Selectment's office at 781-293-2131. All Hanson residents who received fuel assistance last year should have already received-
Oh, is he saying, I hear Kevin, the town administrator?
Um, okay, if you could mute yourself, that would be amazing.
Mute him.
Um, Paul, could we-
Okay.
Could we mute everybody, Paul?
I'll just hang on then.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'll start over.
They cannot mute themselves, though.
Okay, well, let's hope that doesn't happen, okay?
All Hanson residents who received fuel assistance last year should have already received a reapplication form for the upcoming year, which begins on November 1st, 2022. If you have not received your reapplication, please contact Self Help at 508-588-0447. If you have received it and are in need of assistance in completing it, please call the Senior Center, and they will be happy to assist you at 781-293-2683. Hanson residents who would like to apply for fuel assistance for the first time should contact the Senior Center to schedule an appointment at 781-293-2683. Appointments will begin the last week in October. Upcoming meetings, special town meeting, October 3rd, 2022, Select Board, October 4th, 2022, and Select Board, October 18th, 2022.
And recently added, October 11th. Oh, yeah, 2,000, which you had no way-
I don't have that.
You didn't have that, so that's fine. Okay, if everybody on the phone could just make sure that their phone stays muted, that would be awesome. Okay, so we've got quite a bit to go over this evening. The first item that we've got on our agenda is a hearing of a dog complaint of Charles Williams, 115 Leon Court, on dogs owned by David Layton of 73 Leon Court. And do we have either of those individuals here?
David Layton, right, yeah.
Okay, sir. And do we have Charles Williams here?
I believe they are-
Charles, are you on the phone?
There was a turn off.
He's muted. Oh, no, he's not.
Um, Mr. Williams, are you on the phone? And, uh, Mr. Edwards, are you? I know somebody, I know, I believe Mr. Williams has an attorney that is working with him. All right, so far, so good. Okay, so I think in your packet, in the information, I'm sorry, Mr. Hill?
I'd just like to make a point. I think that we're muted from our side here, so they can't hear us talking through Zoom. So if you look up top where it says, "Hanson muted", I think we need to unmute here.
Paul, is it possible that we're muted?
We're muted.
We were muted, okay.
Mr. Williams, are you on the phone? Uh, could everybody that has joined us via Zoom announce themselves and tell us who you are and what you're here for? Are we still? No, we're not muted.
We're not muted.
Patrick, can you hear us?
Video's not turned on either. Try Edward, because he was the one who was trying us first.
Uh, Mr. Edwards, can you hear us? Paul, could we take a brief break and get our act together technologically for a moment? All right, thank you for joining us again. So we are experiencing some technical difficulties, but we're going to move upward and onward. So the second item on our agenda is request town- from, the request from town clerk to approve early voting hours for November 8th general election. And in your packet, there should be something from our town clerk, Beth Sloan. Yep, and Ms. Ray, do you mind just reading that to us? Yep.
Please have the Select Board vote the following early voting hours for the November 8th state election at the next scheduled meeting of September 27th. Thank you, Beth. Early voting hours for November 8th, 2022 state election, Hanson Town Hall, 542 Liberty Street. Saturday, October 22nd, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday, October 24th, 9:00, excuse me, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 25th, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, October 26th, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Thursday, October 27th, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Friday, October 28th, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. And then Saturday, October 29th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The second week of early voting, regular clerk hours, which is Monday, October 23rd, October 31st, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, November 1st, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Wednesday, November 2nd, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Thursday, November 3rd, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00, uh, 5:00 p.m. Friday, November 4th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So move, second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, fantastic, so we are making progress. All right, and we've got in front of us the annual private way plow list for 2023, well, 2022 to 2023, in case we get any storms in advance of that. And as, Mr. Weeks, I'm wondering if I could prevail upon you to read the list?
Private way plow list 2023 to be approved by Selectmen for plowing snow, Alden Way, Arthur Avenue, Arthur Street, Audubon Lane, Azalea Way, Beckett Street, Barker Avenue, Boston Avenue, Briggs Street, Charles Street, Christopher Lane, Cranberry Lane, Cushman Street, Depot Street, Emory Street, Echols Drive, Fallon Point Road, Ferris Street, French Street, Gray Lane, Hanson Court, Hawthorne Street, Hemlock Drive, Hill Road, Offmont Pontet, Independence Avenue, Indian Head Pond Development, Kwani Road, Lakeside Road, Leon Court, Litchfield Lane, Meadow Lane, Ocean Avenue Extension, Pearl Street, Pennsylvania Avenue, Pine Grove Colony, Proudfoot Way, Roller Coaster Road, Santos Court, Snow Street, Spofford Avenue, Station Street, Stringer Lane, Union Park Street, Upton Street, Valerie Forge Road, Village Road, Wilbur Avenue, Wilkie Terrace, entrances only, Woodbine Avenue Extension, Woodman Terrace.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions about the private way plow list? So again, these are roads that every year the town votes to fund at town meeting, and then we vote to give permission to highway to plow. Yes.
Neil, Pine Grove Colony, I've heard it called that. It's also Pine Grove Ave. That's the same road, correct? Pine Grove Avenue?
I really don't know that. Jameson would be in-
I live on Pine Grove Ave., and it's a private road that gets-
If it's been getting plowed, I mean, we have not changed this list. Nothing has been added or, you know, taken off the list.
Except for the one with the asterisk.
Yeah, if it's been getting plowed, it will continue to get plowed.
Okay.
Did anybody else have any other questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So move, second.
I have a-
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, great.
I had a question on the plow, plowing.
Could you please state your name and your address, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm Gail Joyce. I live on Lakeside Road. Due to a road, unacceptable road closure, it's been made mentioned that the plow, the snow plow cannot get through to four houses that are on Roller Coaster Road. And they've said that they could not plow because of the blocked fence that has not actually been approved yet.
Ma'am, who, who, who was "they" said that they could not plow your road?
Residents that live there. There's four residents that live there on Roller Coaster Road that have been told that the Highway Department cannot get down there to plow it.
Who in Highway told them that, ma'am?
I don't know. I am just notifying you that I just heard this, as well as the Post Office has said, because of this closure, the Post Office cannot even get down there to deliver mail if there's a snowstorm.
Okay.
So I'm just letting you know that the plow is accepted. It has to be graded down there and plowed. And that, right, the plow, the snow plows cannot get down in one section, which is affecting four people on Roller Coaster Road. And I don't know what else is going to happen on Lakeside at this point. But I just want to make that note, note that the Highway Department and that have said that there was no problem. There appears to be a tentative problem that needs to be addressed.
Um, thank you, ma'am. We're- Yep.
I have a quick question. My name is John Forts, 55 Leon Court.
Okay.
I understand we're getting plowed. But I'd just like to mention, a while back, I gave Mr. Weeks a letter about the roads being graded, total town wasting money, it rains, we got serious potholes again. It goes over and over. I've been here for seven years, and it's a big waste of taxpayers' money to send a grader down there when they don't even set the forks deep enough to where the bottom of the potholes are to totally grade the road right. And in the Bylaws, it says use proper materials as necessary.
Sir, 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 excuse me for a moment.
Never, ever.
Sir, sir, this is the first I'm hearing of it. I'm sure if you did give something to Mr. Weeks, that we-
I never got a response. I talked to him on the phone a couple times. He said he'd get back to me, and I even delivered a hand to computer written a letter, and never heard another word about it.
Okay, we're not posted to talk about that tonight, but more than glad to look into that for you and-
I keep asking if there's a meeting on this or something, and nobody gives me no information.
Okay, as I said, this is the first I've heard of it, so I don't think anybody else on the board aside than, and I can't speak to Mr. Weeks, but, you know, knows about it. We'll take it under advisement. We'll talk to, to Mr. Shav, who's our highway surveyor, and find out if he's got some thoughts on that. We're just not really-
I've talked to him many different-
Sir, I'm sure, I'm sure that you have, but we haven't. So we're not prepared to talk about that tonight, and we're not posted to talk about it.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so now you heard it.
Okay, yep.
You all heard it. Thank you.
We got a little sidewind, so I'm a little unclear. Did we vote to, to approve that list of-
No, you haven't.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. I think I had a motion and a second?
Yes, you did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. And we've got status of roof repairs, Ms. Green.
Yes, so there is a section of the roof that has been leaking. Our building inspector is here. He can, he can actually let you know exactly which area it is. We did get three quotes. Oh, yep, here he is. Inspector Glass, would you like to talk about the roof?
Yep, the upper section of the old roof, the flat section, leaks badly. It was gone over last time when it was repaired, and they covered over the old metal and then insulated, and then put the rubber roof on that. And that's all failed. So we've got three separate prices here. They came in well under what I originally thought. They range from $9,000 to $14,425.
And is that just for the, for one chunk of it?
Just for the absolute top of the section.
And what's, what, how long has the rest of the roof been there?
I think it got done maybe when the building was redone, back in the 90s. That's just the shingles.
Okay.
But we're talking about a rubber membrane roof on that flat section.
Okay, and so this is, needs to be done, addressed immediately? Yes, I did see the leakage ironically in your office.
Yes.
So, or right outside of your office. So, okay. Are we, do we, have you talked to Todd about whether we've got funds to address this? That seems way more modest than what I was thinking it was going to come in at.
So did I.
Yeah.
I can speak with him on Tuesday. He's, he's been away on vacation for a couple of weeks.
Okay, and so the top, the top-
14 to 50.
Okay, so I'll certainly take it under advisement from the board, but I'm thinking probably in the interest of time, so that Mr. Glass can get this addressed. If we take a vote contingent upon our town accountant confirming that there is money there for the upper, you know, cost, and then we'll leave it to Lisa as the procurement officer with Mr. Glass as the building inspector in conjunction with our town accountant to figure out which vendor we ought to go with. So I am looking for a motion that encompasses all of that.
Okay, that was way too long to make.
Okay, you said it. I'll send it.
I would, I'll make the motion that we have, and I don't have the names in front of me, but the low bid was $9,000.
Yes.
The thing that I would be afraid of, and I'm going to even make the motion longer, is that, Carrie, once the people get inside the roof, there could be problems-
Correct.
-that have to be fixed-
Yep.
-at the time.
Yeah.
So I mean, if I'm going to make this motion, I, I think I would go up another $3,000, not to exceed $12,000 to have the roof fixed, because-
Are you sure you want to go with the low? I was suggesting to go with the higher, and if they end up going with the lower, the middle range, that would still give us a little bit of wiggle room. But if you want to add on to the higher range, just in case that ends up being the preferred provider, and the devil's in the details on what the bids say, you know, because sometimes it looks like they're bidding on the same project, but you get into it and it is, so-
Right, and I think you folks should read these before you make that decision.
Okay, so do we want-
Because there's slight differences, like you said, in each bid.
Well, we're not af- Yes.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Under the procurement laws, if we have a bid that's under $10,000, we use our best business sense, business discretion. So we have two. The third bid is above $10,000. If we were to go with the third bid, we would then need to go out in bids, three new bids, if we went with the $14,000 bid.
All right, so you'd have to do a full RFP?
No, not a full RFP. We would just need to solicit three additional bids to see if we decided to go with the $14,000 one.
All right, so what is your suggestion as our procurement officer?
Well, that's up to the board. I don't know if it's what's involved with soliciting two more bids to see where they come in at the price.
All right.
Or if you feel that the $9,000 is sufficient. But where across is that $10,000 threshold, it brings us into a different level of procurement.
Okay, well, if we go with the $9,000 bid and we find out we need more work up there, what do we do then?
Yeah.
Do we shut the job down till it gets-
I honestly think Jim is 100% right. You know, it's going to be some, something that we, that's discovered, or if it isn't, that would be wonderful. But if we don't plan for that, it's going to end up happening. And so I think in any event, it's going to end up being over the $10,000.
It's very possible, so, you know, think, giving that a little thought. If we go with the higher bid of the 14, if they say, well, there's $5,000 here in repairs that we need, we're still within that threshold. So you don't have to solicit three more bids. We would just make sure the funds are available for this. If you go with the $9,000, and they say, oh, now, you know, the repairs are going to be $13,000, you kind of have to, I would have to call procurement to find out, do we need to rebid this? It started out under 10, it's now over 10. So that would be a question I would have to propose to the 30B attorneys.
Okay, so-
So if you go with the $14,000, okay, just, we need to solicit two more quotes and see where they come in. Once you decide to go with either one of those, if it's over the 10, if they say there's additional work here, we're still within that, we don't need to rebid it.
Okay.
But because this crosses the threshold, that's where the fine line is, that we have to, we'd have to solicit three more votes.
So are you going to be able to solicit?
Yeah, Charlie, Charlie Baker's the one who got these bids.
All right, Mr. Picky.
If we have two more bids and they bolt under $10,000, we're no better off than where we are right now.
If he gets two more bids and they come in under 10, then you can choose, you know, go with any of those bids under 10. I mean, the problem is, again, once they get in there, if there's additional work to be done that brings us up over 10, I will, I will need to call the 30B folks and say, how, how do we reason that? We're going into our roof repair, and they'll give us provisions on how to reason that information.
This must happen fairly often. I can't imagine this.
Oh, it does, it does, yeah.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes, Mr. Goodman.
I used to manage bidding all the time for the state when I worked at Fort Hills. In the process, she's right, the $10,000 is the management number. If you allow them to go up to $10,000, under the bidding laws, you're allowed to have change orders of an additional 10% without having to change for a given.
Okay.
So the idea is if you facilitate $10,000 for her to hire someone, you still have a 10% contingency to deal with the change ones and still stay within the bid.
I mean, if they could change orders, but perfect.
Okay, so-
In this case, it's only $1,000.
I was just going to say, 10% is only another thousand.
No, I know, but you're talking about $9,000. So I got two grand to play with. You have a little more room to play with on getting it to get things done.
If you really think about it, there's hidden damage, okay? You give a price, you can't see hidden damage.
No, that's what I was saying, yeah.
You give a rough price and-
I'm just trying to give an idea.
...in terms of timing, material, job.
All right, so how can we help you move this forward, Mr. Glass?
Well, I didn't know about the procurement thing. I don't know. We want to go get, go run with what we have and see where it comes out.
I think-
Because it's $10,000, if it's $10,000 cap, we have two, like the gentleman said, we have $2,000 more.
What, what, what does the board think?
Yeah, and I, I saw the, the estimates in the company that's $9,000. I talked to Charlie about this. They're actually, that's their-
That's, that's what they do. They do these types of roofs only.
I, I think we should just go with the $9,000, and then we have, you know, an extra 10%.
If it's $10,000 cap, that gives us two more, $2,000.
And then we've got some wiggle room, and if something unforeseen happens-
And we can, once it gets opened up, I can get up there and look at everything and just see what really needs to be done there.
Okay, and so you feel as though the integrity of the rest of that roof is okay?
I believe the frame is, but we don't know what's under the metal sheeting that was left.
Okay, all right, so I will entertain a motion for Mr. Glass and Ms. Green to hire one of the three. They can make that decision, likely be one of the two that's under the, you know, under the 10. And to work with Todd Hassett to see if we, where that money would come from. I'm entertaining that motion.
So, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you, Mr. Glass. I hope it gets fixed quickly for you. Okay, yeah, I, I do too. All right, let's see. In your packet, we've got the Town of Hanson Citizen Survey. And as you will recall, on November 19th, we're having a strategic planning session. And part of that is, of course, to have all department heads and committees, you know, kind of collaborate and talk about the things that they'd like to see the town focus on in terms of priorities. But obviously, the piece that we really want to see, and we need to figure out a way to get information on, is the citizens and what they see as priorities. So Anne Donner, who Lisa and I have been meeting with, and just a reminder that this woman was somebody that Lisa and, Lisa Green and Tony DeFrayis were able to get a grant to have this woman, Anne Donner, who's a consultant through the state, work with us to do this strategic planning session. And she's put together this citizen survey, and it's pretty basic, you know, like, what's your demographic? And, you know, do you own a house? And then it sort of breaks it down into some, you know, what are the things that you see as issues that are facing Hanson? You know, that type of thing. I don't, I don't think there's any, like, hardball questions in here. Just should give us some good insight into where people think we should be focusing our energy. Because a lot of times, you know, we're just kind of responding to things as they evolve, rather than being proactive. So just wanted you guys to, I know it was in your packet, hopefully you all had a chance to look at it before tonight. The thought is that this would be put up at the library, put up on our website, and generally put up anywhere that somebody might be willing to put it up. There's a QR code. It's pretty easy to take. It literally takes like two minutes to take, unless I guess you could take a long time going in comments. Can we mute Charles Williams, please? Okay, so did anybody have any questions or comments about the, about the survey?
It's great.
Yeah, I thought it was, you know, hit the right, all the right questions. I will entertain a motion to approve the survey.
So move.
Second.
Okay, and any further discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, fantastic. And what happened to all of our people on Zoom?
Is this a different tab? Is it just-
We're going to have her dial in to that phone number, and they're going to join you by the phone on her desk.
Okay. And Paul, could we take a brief recess while we're doing this? Are we able to reconvene? Okay, great. All right, and welcome back. And here we are at our third segment of the September- 27th Board of Selecting meeting. And we have got a dog camera. Now, I just want to set some rules of engagement for the Williamses and for the Laytons on the phone. I know this is a very emotional situation, I know this is a very emotional situation, um, and as I mentioned earlier, I know it's a pressure cooker. You guys are living within close proximity with this issue happening, and there's a lot of history. This board does have, uh, documentation, um, from the police, from our animal control officer, from the Williamses, um, from our town clerk about, uh, registration. It's, it's a lot of information. So, um, so we have, we're enterprise of it, and I mostly say that for the Williamses. I, I, we've read through, um, all of the various incidents that you've, um, you've documented and that we've received from the police and from, um, our animal control officer. And I, I just wanna make sure that folks are really clear about, um, what the, what the select board is able to do and what we are not able to do. This is not a court. Um, we are not having a trial. What we're doing is looking to see if, um, this has, if the incident, uh, incidents or alleged incidents on Leon Court rise to the level where this select board, um, should take some type of action. Okay.
Okay.
Um, so I was just, um, trying to give some rules of engagement, um, and just emphasizing that I know this is a very emotional situation, and I'm asking that we stick to facts and that we look to have a path forward that's going to make everybody feel as comfortable as we possibly can. Um, I don't think that there's probably gonna be any winners today, per se. But we're gonna try to figure out what can the town do to support, um, restoring some peace back to Leon Court. So, with that, Mr. Kenny, could I prevail upon you to come up and give us the summary of the events as you see them and the situation as you see it, and whatever recommendations you might have? And, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Kenny, it did occur to me, I probably should, um, allow the Williamses to make a brief statement and then Mr. Layton to make a brief statement, and then we'll, so if you don't mind, just kind of, okay, great. Um, so I'm not sure, Mr. Williams or Mrs. Williams, whether, which of you would like to make a, you know, very brief statement about what your situation is, um, and trying to state it as factually as possible.
No, no, good evening. Thank you all for, um, having this meeting. Eleven months, uh, my wife and I, we've been here over a year, but the last eleven months has been almost hell dealing with this dog situation. I mean, it's been emotional, because this dog situation has led to an unfair, um, arrest on my part. I was attacked by Mr. Layton's son in my driveway, and when I tried to defend myself, he was an aggressive, bad person. So, the reason why, you know, we're taking these steps and we're coming to the board is because we've gone to the court and they keep referring back to the board and saying that the town has to do something. So, I've talked to the chief, I've talked to Lisa Green, I've talked to Joe Kennedy, and we're at our wit's end. I've had to change my kid's bus stops, I've had to, I, I mean, I've had to console my wife. We've had to go to therapy. She almost lost our child. Like, this is, this is too much. Come home, and we should all live in peace. Dave and I have spoke about this several times. If you watched the video that we first encountered, you know, he was very aggressive, and I told him, "Don't talk to me that way." We've shaken hands about this, but this continues to happen over and over. I even bought Dave beer just to try to smooth things over as neighbors. To happen. He's calling my, he's calling my wife and myself out of, out of mind. We don't want this to escalate to another incident, so that's why we're here today.
Okay, and, um, we, we are having a little bit of difficulty hearing, Mr. Williams, but we're gonna, we're gonna muddle through here. Um, we definitely got the gist of what you were saying and appreciate that it's a very emotional situation for you and your family. So, with that, we're gonna ask Mr. Layton, again, if you could make a very brief statement about...
About them?
Sure, feel free, yeah.
How many of the phones? They're not here, man.
Oh, that's a, well, okay, yeah.
Okay, um, first of all, I wanna thank everyone for being here, and, and believe me, I would rather be anywhere else but right here right now. I'm sorry for what has transpired, and I wish it didn't, and I wish I could stop it. It's, it's a dog, and I'm doing my best. And I just wanted to say that some things have been put out of, out of order. My son didn't attack it. He pulled a knife on my son, and that's why he was arrested.
Well, Mr. Layton, I, I, uh, we, we really, and I...
Okay.
I know, no, no, I know there's a history there, but what I wanna try to do is, we, we cannot...
I want...
We want, we can focus on the dog and what we can do to resolve that situation, and then the rest is really up to you folks to resolve.
And by the way, that big, huge pamphlet right there, nothing's for me. I never pursued anything. So, although, there's a lot of lies and innuendo in there that I've never got a chance to...
Well, this is actually from the police, sir, so I, I, most of it is from the police, sir.
Well, no, I saw what he wrote to you guys.
No, but a lot of these are police reports, sir.
All I see is police stuff, seriously. That's all, that's all I've seen.
So, well, this letter was false.
Okay.
But let's get over that, 'cause that's what I wanna do. I wanna get this over with. And, you know what, I had a big statement. I'm not gonna say anything. A tree fell down on my, on my fence. It broke the fence. I'm in the middle of spending $2,000 on a back fence, then I get halfway done. Unfortunately, this dog is very smart, and when I have people over, he stands by the door and runs out the door. And he's never bitten anyone or attacked anyone. He, he, he barks incessantly. He chases cars. Yes, he does. And I've had him on a tether, and I, and I've tried to do the right thing all along. This has caused me a bunch of anxiety. Every time my dogs go out now, I freak out. You know, because is he gonna, are they gonna get loose again? I mean, just letting them out to go to the bathroom. I, I'm sorry that it caused this gentleman so much grief. I really am. And I wish there's something I could do, and I'm trying to do it to alleviate this. But sometimes, he just gets out, and, and, and I'm doing the best I can. And I guess that's all I'll say.
So, Mr. Layton, can we drill down a bit on that, on that statement? Um, so you said that you tethered him. Was it with a chain, or was he able to chew through?
He's on a tether.
Okay, but is it like a leather tether, or what is the material?
No, he's on a, he's on a tether in the backyard.
Okay.
But when, when, when we have company, he'll literally jump out the front door when someone opens the door. And he's impossible to catch. He thinks it's all a game, so I can't catch him. I've driven around town, I've followed him around town, and usually he'll come home within a half minute. And, and, and again, that's not sufficient, and that doesn't work, and, and, and... The only thing, I just recently purchased an electric caula for him, and I hope and pray and to God that works. Because I don't wanna be here.
So, an electric fence, or the one that you...
Electric fence, I'm sorry, with the caulk.
Okay, okay.
At five, I'm gonna put it.
Okay, okay.
You know, I, I just, I, I'm at my wit's end too, like the Williams are, and I'm sorry. I really truly am that this has caused them so much grief. I never intended to. The dog is not vicious. He's never bit anybody. He's just a dog that gets out, and I wish I can control it better.
So, you, you certainly can, you can certainly appre, just, just one moment, Mr. Williams. You can certainly appreciate...
I do.
Um, how somebody would feel if they felt like they had their children out, and this dog, who they don't know. You know the dog, 'cause it's your dog.
I do.
But this dog is out, and they just don't know what, what kind of way this dog might present. And it, it barks, but it hasn't bitten anybody, but God...
I can appreciate that.
God forbid, we don't wanna get to that point, ever.
Exactly.
You know?
I can appreciate that.
So, so, um, I hear that you're saying that you're gonna buy the electric fence.
I already did.
Uh, okay, and when would that, is it already installed, or...
It's, it, well, it, it's, it's a wireless fence. I just got a trailer on it, and I'm in the middle of doing that right now. Uh, a tree fell down recently, broke some of my fence in the, in the front. I'm in the middle of repairing that, and I'm putting a vinyl fence in the backyard, which I could half-done. Which, all of this has cost me about $4,000. And, and I'm all doing this for the dog and, believe it or not, for Mr. Williams and his family. Because I don't, um, there's a million places I'd rather be right here now. Nothing you want so wonderful, people.
We hear that all the time, so don't...
We do?
Yes, we do.
But I'm, I'm, I'm trying, and, and I get his grief, but it's not like I let him out and go, go, go chase the Williams. You know, go down the end of the street and bark at the Williams' house.
Okay, alright, Mr. Layton. So, I, I, I feel comfortable that we've got your perspective, and so do you mind if we kinda move on with the...
Not at all.
Okay, great. Thank you for sharing that with us. Mr. Williams, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, so, they're actually, unfortunately, she couldn't attend today. I have a neighbor who lives on Milford, who was actually, her jacket was bitten by the dog. This dog actually did attack my wife, um, in late November. Unfortunately, we don't have it on video. It caused her to bleed and go to the hospital. We can provide that if you need that as well, so...
I think that that's rather critical. Is that something that you've spoken to our animal control officer about?
Joe's aware of all of these issues.
Okay.
Um, and as David's saying, he's sorry, he's sorry, he, well, if he was truly sorry, he wouldn't be calling us, "Stop acting like, ah, and stop doing this." That's, that's his reaction.
Sir, Mr. Williams, I really am going to encourage you to, um, to stick with the protocol here. This is a public meeting, and we are not going to use any kind of swears while we're in this meeting.
I was quoting what he said to us. I apologize.
And, and Mr., uh, also, I'm Mr. Williams' attorney. And, and I just wanna, I just wanna underscore, uh, you know, the anxiety he feels. And, um, you know, his wife and his family, they do feel under duress. We've spoken about this many times, and it's also, from what I've gathered, a shared feeling of other neighbors. So, it's, it's not just the Williams' problem. It's also a neighborhood-wide problem. And so, there's even more urgency, you know, to get it resolved. And I think, you know, Mr. Williams is obviously, uh, upset about it, because it's, it's been something, it's been a recurring problem. And so, that's where the emotion comes out, but we're here to try to solve the problem. And I think you're doing a good way to, to shepherd it towards, uh, what the facts are and for us to try to get a, get a solution. So, I, I applaud that.
Jim, and if I could add something real quick?
As long as we're not rebutting, 'cause I don't wanna...
No, I'm not rebutting, but real quickly, all the neighbors are scared to death. I have three neighbors here that aren't scared of my dog or me.
Alright, that would...
Why would they come?
Okay, we're not gonna get in, we're, okay.
Okay, I'm just pointing that out.
Yeah, okay, so, um, so with that, um, I am going to ask Mr. Kenny, where, sorry, Joe, I lost track of where you were. Um, you're like, where's Waldo? If you don't mind, um, standing up and letting us know what you've got for documentation, what your, um, observations have been, um, that would be a great next step here.
Alright, so, Joe Kenny, Animal Patrol. I've been out to the house a handful of times, probably around five or six times now, um, over the past couple of years. All for the same thing, the dog being loose. I was made aware of, I think, the wife being knocked down or slipping when she was running from the dog. I haven't been told of any attacks or bites from the dog. And when I'm out there, the dog does seemingly act aggressively. It barks, it comes toward you. It's never bitten me, it's never tried to bite me, but it does give the appearance of an aggressive dog coming toward you. Like I said, it's never bitten me. I usually keep something between me and the dog.
Mm-hmm.
And I've only actually seen the dog personally out once before I was actually in the patrol here, I was filling in. And then one other occasion, was the only two times I saw the dog actually outside of a fenced-in area. Other than that, by the time I've gotten there, it's been back in the house. But...
Now, do the measures that Mr. Layton indicated he was going to take, which is an electric fence and then repeat, putting the back fence in and repairing the front fence that got damaged by the tree, does that seem sufficient to you, or do you believe additional measures? For instance, the other, the only other time we've had a dog hearing that I'm aware of, at least since I've been on the board, um, was one that happened on, um, I want to...
West Washington.
Yes, exactly. And in that particular case, you had suggested a kennel.
Yes, so, in general, as far as like the dangerous dog laws go, usually, most people recommend to be a six-foot fence, um, with a secured kennel. A, the fence or secured kennel can account for the property being fenced in. I know there's a front panel down. It's been down for a little while, and that's typically where the dog comes to. I know for a while he had it blocked off, and then it had, I think, moved the dog to a lead in the backyard, and it slowed down on the amount of times it was getting loose or calls were getting. And went to, for a little span with no calls, and then we got a couple here and there, but it hasn't been as many since he's been putting it on. The dog does, we've gotten calls and, I mean, videos, I didn't think the dog was out, but not that I've seen. I usually recommend in these cases a, a secured kennel with six-foot fence or an enclosed yard, um, which finishing the fence and enclosing that would be sufficient. Typically, in these cases, I don't recommend an electric fence as like a secure option, um, only because batteries die and dogs get loose.
But, but as a secondary type of backup?
A secondary thing, I think that's great.
Yeah.
They help, and probably to keep him away from the, like, the areas that he may frequently be able to figure out. So, I think it's a great additional addition.
Yes.
But not something that I'd say the town should do.
Not a substitute?
Yeah, not a substitute.
Okay, um, and, and, okay. Mr. Layton, I don't know if you told us what the timeframe was. I know you're training on the electric fence, but since we're hearing Mr. Kenny say that, um, the, the actual fence, um, is really of more importance, what is your ETA on getting that?
I need two weeks.
Two weeks?
I'll, I'll hopefully get it done this weekend, but, um, two weeks tops.
Mr. Hill?
When the fence is complete, will it, if the dog was to run out the front door, would it be enclosed in the fence? I think that's what we're hearing, is the dog, when you mentioned it.
And that's why I'm buying the electric fence.
The electric...
The electric caula, Joe.
Would be the backup for the front door.
And that would be the backup for the front door. I'm also gonna get signs that I'm gonna put in my front window notifying anyone coming in, you know, "Do not let the dog out. Do not leave the door open." And, and, again, that's all I can think of at this time.
Mr. Kenny, any other further, um...
As far as front doors go, um, I don't have a lot of suggestions, to be honest. Gates work sometimes, but that's still getting people to close them and open them.
I mean, this dog has jumped through a screen. He's, that ran a bunch, you know?
He is pretty, uh, pretty intent on getting outside and...
And we're doing the best we can, and I'm gonna continue.
Okay. Okay, so, um, Mr. Tallman, any suggestions or insight that you would like to provide to us on this matter?
Well, I think that as a, you have to sift through the evidence, which you have some of, um, before you, and then it appears that this is lying somewhere between nuisance and dangerousness. Certainly, it appears to meet the standard for nuisance based upon the excessive barking and the somewhat menacing behavior. Um, whether the board finds that it meets dangerousness because the dog behaves, and I'm quoting, "In a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat, a physical injury or death would be, is a, is a factual finding you would have to make to elevate to a dangerousness." Either way, the remedies for kind of what's gone on here, um, and I believe a first offense or first hearing anyway are somewhat similar in nature. Certainly fencing, um, at least in mandating that the dog only be allowed in the fenced area. Certainly, the electric fence provides some level of, of proof or of, um, assistance in the front yard, but I think it should be limited, if you, depending on your finding, to the rear yard. Otherwise, some of the other things that Joe's already talked about are important. When the dog is taken outside, it should be accompanied. That is a potential solution on a, on a suitable lead. You cannot order that the dog be tethered while it's alone. That is not permitted, but it can be confined to a specific area. There are some other remedies. If there was damage caused by the dog, then you could potentially mandate an insurance policy. I haven't seen any evidence of, um, of damage caused, although there's certainly some evidence that, uh, precipitated a, um, an unhealthy situation with Ms., uh, Mrs. Williams. So, I think that's important to note. That is among the things that you can order. The more extreme remedies of, um, uh, usually occur when there's been an actual attack or repeated offenses. It does not appear to meet those standards. Those, the more extreme remedies include euthanasia, rarely imposed on a, after a first hearing, unless something really significant has happened. But, um, I think you've, you've framed it well, Laura, as to kind of the limits of where you can go, and Joe certainly has, has framed the potential remedies that are usual in these kinds of situations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tallman. Does the, Mr. Hickey, thoughts, comments?
When did the storm, uh, damage the fence?
Uh, it actually was when the storm, it just went down. Uh, I wanna say about August.
Okay, and Joe, any of the calls that you've got before August, which you...
There was a panel down in the front, but then it was repaired for a short time, and then there was another panel. I don't know if it's the same panel, um, but there was another panel down toward the front, which, I saw was a tree.
You think within two weeks, you should have all this done?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and what are you going to do in the next two weeks to make sure this little bugger doesn't get out?
Well, uh, first of all, uh, Mr. Tallman, um, I bring him out on a leash to go to the bathroom, in my back, in my yard.
Yeah.
That's what I do. Uh, the only time he ever gets out is when he's in the home and someone inadvertently opens the door. So, I take him out, and I believe that gentleman also, which I'm a little concerned about, mentioned tether's illegal. I put him on a tether, 'cause I have no other option.
No, he didn't say it was illegal. He said it was illegal for us to order you to do that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, when I bring him out, I bring him out on a leash, and I put him on a tether, and I let him out there for 15 minutes. And then I go back out... And then I go back out with a leash, put him back on the leash, bring him back in the house. The only time, the last eight or nine times that he's escaped, is when we've had company and he got out the front or back door. The back door will be, will be, um, enclosed in with a vinyl fence. The front door, obviously, I can't do that, but that's why I'm buying the electric fence, the electric fence, hoping to alleviate that issue and buy the signs that I'm gonna put in my windows of both on my front and back door. Do not let the dog out.
So, the backyard will be totally enclosed?
The backyard will be totally enclosed.
Is it possible that you could let the dog out the back door before you let your company in the front door?
Yes.
Is there a gate to the backyard where your guests could come through?
Yes.
So if they came in through the back door, even if the dog escaped, he's only escaping to the backyard?
Yes.
Okay, I'm only giving you those few suggestions, only because I don't wanna see anybody back here.
Yeah.
Uh, because if he escapes through the front door, we're sitting back here again, we're talking about this again with Joe and the lawyers, where you, you already know what's gonna happen. So I mean, if somebody that comes and you need to sign for a package, excuse me one minute, I need to let my dog out of the backyard, then you can open the door. Or if your guest is coming over for a cookout or a party or whatever, they come through the back, they come through the gate into the backyard, and the dog is only gonna stay there.
That's a good idea.
Can I ask, how old is this dog?
He's, um, oh, five, and by the way, he, he's a dog that, um, I, I took from somebody who lost their home, and I took him in.
Well, the problem sounds to me like the dog needs training also. That dog needs some obedience training.
Yeah, and, uh, he wasn't, um, fixed, he.
I lived there for seven years and never had a problem with that dog, never.
Well, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm actually pretty good with dogs myself, I've never had a problem, I've never had an aggressive dog come after me, I, I can usually deal with them, I'm just saying, it sounds like the dog needs some training, and he's not fixed?
He's not fixed.
He needs to be fixed. That will calm him down a million ways.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's, people don't like to fix them too young, I understand that, I don't know what kind of dog it is, it doesn't matter.
Does he get left?
Then get him fixed, it's gonna calm him down quite a bit. That is one of the actions we could, um, request, yeah, but. I'm not ordering, I'm just saying, I get him fixed, it'll, it'll go a long way towards calming him down.
I hate to do that, but I will.
I would. I, I think Mrs. Rain is on to something, Mr. Weeks.
No, I, I agree with what everyone else is saying, I don't, I think the recommendations make a lot of sense.
And Mr. Hill, any thoughts?
No.
Okay, um, so.
Can I add something? So it goes off of what Mr. Talman's saying. Uh, typically with these things is either deemed dangerous or deemed a nuisance. Um, so that's like a two-part thing, so you deem him either dangerous or you deem him a nuisance or nothing. And then you can insert rules. I agree, Mr. Talman, I don't know that this would classify as a dangerous dog, there's no damaged dog, hasn't bitten anyone, hasn't damaged any pets or anything like that. Um, I think a nuisance dog here, so we go by like what we're allowed to qualify for nuisance dogs as opposed to a dangerous dog if, if that you have to say.
Okay, so, um, if Mr. Layton is saying, um, within two weeks, and Mr. Layton, I would implore you, if you can up the ante on that timeline to do so. Um, and, and, and I recognize that you're probably trying to do what you can't, you're doing it yourself, so.
You are muted. If you mute or unmute yourself, the host would like you to unmute your microphone.
Okay.
You can press star six to unmute.
What are you saying there? Alright, thank you.
You are unmuted.
Thank you, Joe, um, so, um, if you can do anything to expedite that, um, happening, I think that would be a real show of good faith, um, that would probably go quite a ways towards making the Williams feel as though you're being responsive to the concerns, and I'm su- you've got a son here, I know you must know what it would felt, feel like to have little people and think that somebody, that a dog's gonna attack them. I can't even imagine what that would be like, you know, to, and, and I know it hasn't actually done that, but the barking and the aggressiveness, um, you know, for, for a little person, you know, would be very off-putting. Um, and potentially, I don't wanna get dramatic, but it could scar them, honestly, emotionally, to, to have that kind of a, you know, a situation happening. Um, so if, whatever you can do to get that done as quickly as possible, but no later than two weeks. Um, and that means, Mr. Kenny, that we would need you to, um, make a, make a visit to the home.
Yes.
Um, and to, um, you know, basically kind of verify that what he's told us that he's gonna do, so put the back fencing on, fix the front panel, and as a secondary measure to, you know, put the electric fence. Um, although we're not ordering that, but you have made the representation that you're doing that. Um, and I think that gives us some comfort that, you know, that would be like a plan B if something, something goes wrong with the, with, um, him busting through, and I think what Mrs. Rain has suggested probably has a lot of merit. Um, we're not ordering that, but, um, we're strongly urging that you look into it. And what else, Mr. Kenny?
I think that's about it.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll give, um, the Williamses, um, one opportunity to let us know, based on what you're hearing, are you feeling comfortable? I mean, we can't make the situation go away overnight and wave a ma- magic wand, which is I'm sure what would make you the most comfortable, um, but we can, um, you know, implore uh, Mr. Layton to do the right thing, which it seems he's inclined to do, um, and to do it as quickly as possible so that you are given some relief. Are you comfortable with what we've discussed tonight?
I am not.
What are you looking for, Mr. Williams?
So, I, and please allow me, I, I, I promise there will be no profanity in my quotations, but, um, you have to look at it from my perspective, um, there's also, there's already been an incident that has escalated. Um, and I know that this is not what we're here for, but it all ties together. I want you all to imagine coming home at one thirty in the morning, and four drunk kids in your driveway telling you, are you the one that called the police on my dad's or my dog? And what I ha- have, what I have had to deal with, and my family has had to deal with. So my fear is, if this dog gets out and myself, my wife, my mother-in-law mistakenly hit it, what's gonna happen to us?
So I, I do hear what you're saying, uh, part of what you're talking about is the human situation that you're dealing with, and that isn't some, that is a matter for the police, that is not something that this board, um, can act on, unfortunately. Um, but I, I do hear what you're saying, that they're interrelated, uh, but we have limited ability to um, help effectuate a positive change in this situation, and I think we've really stretched to um, the maximum of our abilities to try to, um, have some positive change happen there by ordering the things that we're talking about. Um, and I'm sorry that it doesn't, um, feel good to you, or it doesn't, it doesn't take it as far as you were hoping. Um, but I hope you can appreciate that we have bylaws and statutes that we have to comply with, and as I mentioned at the outset, we're not a court, so uh, we're very limited in what we're able to do to effectuate a change here.
And, and let me just sort of add one thing, this is, um, this is Ed Brilly, I'm the attorney. The, um, I like the discussion that you had about practical steps that can be done that are within the board's authority. And, you know, you mentioned training. Now, is, is a mandatory training, um, session or session something that the board has ever required before? Because it seems like that has the potential to be a, a backstop for when mistakes happen. If the dog were to be able to be trained properly, where a certain vocal command could stop the dog, then that would give everyone a lot more control. Uh, so that, that's one question.
Okay, okay, well, fair enough, then, Mr. Talman, is that something within, um, our jurisdiction?
I'm not, I, I, you know, I haven't, the, the question comes up, and normally there's voluntary, um, uh, compliance with something like that, but directing professional training, I'm not sure is within our, within what I've seen particularly in these orders. I think it would go a long way here along with the, the neutering, which is acceptable. So, um, I haven't seen a direct order that someone spend money on a professional trainer before, um, I think it, it could be potentially reasonable here, and I think we all know, I'm a dog owner too, that training does work. Um, I think neutering here would, would probably work, um, better. So I think that would be something to discuss with, um, the, the dog owner, if he's willing to send the dog to, to training, but I'm not sure it's within the four corners of what we do in these orders.
Okay, and Mr. Talman, are you suggesting that the board order the dog to be neutered?
So I'm, I'd be interested in hearing what Joe has to say about that.
Mr. Kenny?
Um, in all the hearings I've sat through, I haven't had anyone order him to be neutered. Though I agree with neutering your pets, um, I haven't heard of it being required. Um, I think legally you can require it.
It is, I know it's, we, we can legally, yes.
You can do that, as far as the laws go. As far as training goes, I don't necessarily think that's within like the scheme we're supposed to do by law. Um, and that's because I could say, Joe Smol, the trainer, trained my dog, and just because somebody says the dog, the dog went to ten training classes, doesn't mean the dog now is good citizenship, like great dog, it's just means he completed classes. Um, so it's not something that you can physically, candidly do there.
Okay, so, um, so, but you're saying, Mr. Layton, that you are willing?
I'd be willing to explore it, sure.
Well, when you say explore it, are you willing to, um?
I wanted to see how much it cost me. I've already spent four thousand dollars on, on fantasy and this and that.
Okay, um, okay, alright, so, um, I think we'd like you to explore the training and the neutering, we're not ordering that this time. Uh, that might be something if we have to have another conversation, if these remedies don't work, um, which I'm really hoping is not going to be the case, um, then we, that might be something that we have to, you know, investigate. Um, and I think it, I honestly, it's just gonna all, all around look better, um, for you, and I think feel better for the Williamses if you're able to pursue those things. Um, I think these would be olive branches, um. So, um, okay, uh, so I think, um, with that, then I will entertain a motion to have, um, Mr. Layton uh, wrecked the, um, fixed the fence that he has, put a fence in the back.
Laura, bu- 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 before you do that motion, um, I think it would be good for the, for their motion to um, find the dog to be a nuisance or potentially dangerous under that, that standard, and then um, take a motion on the remedy.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Talman, um, I will entertain a motion, um, do, what, what do we feel? Are we talking? He sounds like, he sounds like a nuisance, nuisance, okay. A train, hopefully he's trainable and, and he won't turn into a dangerous. Alright, so do people?
Let, let me, let me be clear, though, from my understanding of, of this, that the remedies for nuisance are generally much less than the remedies for dangerousness. The, the, the standard for dangerousness doesn't have to be an attack, I'm not trying to put words in your mouths at all, it could be, um, that the dog behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury. So, um, that is part of the standard. Some of the remedies that you're talking about, um, certainly fencing is well within just a nuisance declaration. If you went further into something like neutering, then you would be, um, I think that would require a dangerousness, um, determination.
Well, I guess we have to do that. Okay, so do people feel as though the dangerousness threshold has been met?
For, for me, no, because I feel like we're not ordering the neutering of the dog at this point, so why would we even go there right now?
Well, what Jay's saying is there are remedies that we can enforce if it is a dangerousness issue, but that we cannot necessarily order if it's a, um, if it's just a nuisance, um.
But he said the laws of.
Mo- most of the remedies you are suggesting are within the, the four corners of nuisance, which is essentially confinement-related, um, uh, items, the, the fencing, um, the being accompanied, uh, by a, a suitable adult when being walked, et cetera. Um, so that's all fine under nuisance. It's that if you wanted to go further than that and compel some of the other, uh, items, then, um, then you would have to be in the dangerousness, uh, territory. But you could confi- require the dog be confined indoors or within a securely fenced area under a nuisance determination.
Okay, and I, I think what I'm hearing everybody say is, our gut is that, that, that we don't feel at this point, based on what we've seen, that this, it's, it rises to the level of dangerous, um, but it, but it is clearly a nuisance, um, and, and that the things that we've discussed doing are within our purview for a nuisance. Um, and I'm hoping that we never hear again about this dog, and then we don't have to determine that there's a dangerousness issue, um.
Yeah, you're gonna hear from the witnesses that lived on that road?
We're not really.
Because I totally disagree what they're saying. I lived there for seven years, that dog never once, once.
Oh, excuse me, sir.
Excuse me, sir.
Uh, 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 okay, nope, nope, I'm sorry, sir.
Point of order.
I'm sorry.
Hi, John. Point of order.
So, I'm sorry, we, we really, we do have a, a protocol, and, and and part of it is to ask to be recognized, and to your point, sir, we're not really gonna be asking for witnesses, because what we've got is Mr. Kenny's observations, the police observations, and then we've got what the Williams have experienced, and then what Mr. Layton is saying. And I appreciate that you guys may have a different viewpoint, but the police reports and Mr. Kenny's, um, viewpoint is really what we're trying to focus on here. Um, and I don't think it's gonna change whether we think the dog is a nuisance, but I, I appreciate, um. So, um, okay, so with that.
Just say, this is, um, the attorney here. The only witness I think could be valuable we haven't heard from would be Mr. Williams' wife, Valencia, because my understanding is she had quite a specific experience, and that could be maybe the most, uh, crucial testimony to making this distinction?
Um, I'm gonna, I've got, just a moment, Mrs. Williams. I'm going to allow just a bit of latitude here, but this has gone on for quite a while, and I think we've been fairly, fair-minded about trying to listen to everybody's perspective and to do the right thing, so I would ask that in the interest of time, um, that, you know, if you could be as succinct as possible, um, and not get into name-calling or any of that type of stuff, and please focus on the dog's behavior and not the people's behavior.
Yes, um, I'm, I'm not gonna name-call, I don't need to do any of those things, I'm just gonna say, um, as far as like between nuisance and nuisance and dangerous, you said that it's considered dangerous if the dog tries to attack someone. My husband stated before that the dog did try to attack me. I was going to my car, was going to work, and I was pregnant, and I didn't know the dog was out. It ran to the car, jumped on the top of the car, and at the side of the car. At the time, I asked my husband um, to have a talk with the neighbors next door, because at that time I thought it was their dog, and they kept saying to us that it wasn't the dog. I didn't know at the time it was Dave's dog until later on, when it happened, the dog came out again. But it's several times I've tried to come out the house, and the dog did try to attack me, whether I'm getting the mail, it chased my oldest son to the, the second bus stop, we done changed the bus stop, it chased him down the road. He came back the other day saying that the dog chased him, I didn't know that it was Dave's dog again, until we saw it in the yard yesterday, again. So.
Okay, so you're saying, you're saying that it ha- it has attacked, it has physically, not just threatened to attack you, but it?
I had to come out of work because I had bleeding during my pregnancy, because I was, I was afraid, the dog did jump. It jumped on the side of the car, and it jumped on the top of the car.
Okay, alright, thank you for that information, Mrs. Williams, um, okay, um, given that additional information, does anybody feel that it rises? Okay, given that additional information, does anybody feel that it rises to the level of dangerousness?
Does it, if we were to change it to dangerousness, does it change our recommendation of what gets done? I don't think it does.
It doesn't probably change our recommendation now, but should they, we wouldn't know. If I mean, I don't know if it, I mean, unless somebody feels strongly now that we need to recommend that it.
I I don't think we need to change our recommendation, but I'm not sure about the dangerousness. That throws a little bit of gray in the area.
No, I just, I was reading the bylaws and reading, reading all of the documents that were given to us. I just, I feel like the the measures that we're putting in place right now is a reasonable remedy for this. And the the level for dangerousness doesn't need require an attack. It just requires, according to the language here, just someone to feel threatened and or worried about an attack.
And she's saying that's how she feels.
No, we do, does she say that's how she feels? It's been reported that way. But I think that regardless of whether right now it's a nuisance or 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 dangerousness, the remedies that we're asking to be put in place right now that are being ordered to be put in place should stop the dog from running out and violating leashing law, which is really the biggest issue at this point, but rather than being a threat. So if, I would just recommend that if if these things don't take place, then we would have to by nature of that because the orders that we're doing right now would require us to escalate it to a dangerousness level and then add additional steps. So I think this is a good, a good, in my opinion, a good first step.
And hopefully the last step we have to take.
Yeah, and if they're done immediately, I appreciate the two weeks, but it'd be good to do it sooner than that because just like it can be, if if the dog happens to run out, if you give yourself two weeks and the dog runs out in two days, you can get an escalation to it to dangerousness within two, we can just call a hearing next week. So it's really important that these things are done immediately and and taken seriously because, you know.
They are very serious.
No, I know, I'm just saying out loud for the sake of saying out loud, but I think that that's, that makes the most sense.
Mrs. Rand, does that change your mind at all?
No, I I just, I don't wanna see the dog reach the point where it's a dangerous dog. It's just, it's a sad thing because it's a someone's pet.
Yeah.
Someone's pet, I don't wanna see anything happen to him. So I hope you take care of this and do the training that needs to be done and get him fixed. That's my recommendation.
Mr. Hickey, change of heart, change of mind, okay. All right, so let's circle back. I will entertain a motion to consider this dog at 73 Leon Court, owned by David Layton, as a nuisance. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, I will entertain a motion as to the remedies. Mr. Hickey, did you want to take that away?
The fence, not letting the dog out the front door, take precautions to let the dog out the back door and then invite the people in through the front door or have the guests come in through the back gate into the house through the back door. I just, I don't want to know that the dog has been out.
I'm not sure we can order him to do the second part, but the fence we can.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think, I think you, you know, I hope what you're hearing is we, we want to help you keep your dog, but it can't continue to menace the neighbors. Yeah, okay, so help us help you. And help us help the Williamses so that they can feel comfortable in their own home. Okay, so that's a motion and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion from the board? Mr. Hill.
There are two dogs at the house, right?
Do we need to name the dog and question?
Scout.
It's scout, scout, the other one's name is Jet?
Jet.
Okay, all right, so scout is the one. Thank you, Mr. Hill, it helps clarify. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, great, all in favor? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Williams, Mr. Edwards and Mr. Talaman. We appreciate your participation and thank you, Mr. Layton. And I hope that you can resolve this timely and get back to having a peaceful coexistence there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Question, I'm sorry. What happens if, unfortunately, we have to be here again, what what happens then?
I'm I'm not sure what you mean, sir. If if any, there is any issue, you need to call the police or the animal control officer and then we will take it from there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ross, could I just hang up on Patrick Roach? Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the the dog hearing.
So move, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Mr. Roach.
I'm here for the committee too.
Yeah, that's. Mr. Roach, are you with us?
Patrick, can you hear us?
It said something about muted again.
Can you hear us?
I don't think you can hear us.
He can hear us, but we can't hear you. I'm never gonna admit I'm cold, Jim. Ever. Say what?
Do you ask one more time if you can hear you?
Patrick, you can hear us, correct? Yes, but we cannot hear him. Now we can hear you, okay.
Oh, great.
Yep, all right, we're cooking with gas, Patrick. Thank you for hanging in there for us. And we're sorry that, you know, every time you join us, we seem to get sidelined on a million other things. But thank you for joining us. And with that, I will turn it over to you to to take over. Do we need to, Ms. Green? Do we need to open a hearing for this?
Yes.
Well, the hearing's already opened. This is to close the hearing because it's been on for the last few weeks.
Okay.
We opened it a few weeks ago and this is, this is intended to be the closure of the hearing.
Closure of the, okay.
Yeah, I wanted to just to highlight that what Jim's saying, so the public review period has been opening, open for about a month. But today is the official public hearing, so I think you should open the public hearing.
Mr. Armstrong. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the revised Hanson Community Power Plan for electricity aggregation.
So moved.
Do I have a second? To open up the hearing?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, Mr. Roach, we are now officially in the hearing.
Okay, great, well, I might just ask first if Jim wants to say any words. I have a very short opening and then we can get to any public comment.
Mr. Armstrong, if you can identify who you are and what committee you're with and what role you're playing.
Jim Armstrong, I'm the vice chairman of the Energy Committee for the town of Hanson. And we've been, this is the second hearing we've had on this. The first hearing we had, we actually submitted to the DPU. They made some modifications, they came back. We had to modify our plan. That's why we had to have another hearing. This was approved at town meeting last year. So this is not something new. Ironically, Patrick and I were talking about this this week. National Grid has actually announced a 40% increase in our electric bills starting next month. What we're trying to do is mitigate that risk and that was always our intention. Real simple, what we're trying to do is to buy electricity on your behalf as a town citizens, buy it aggregation as a group. A lot of towns have been doing this. And in the process of doing it, we mitigate the risk. The utility companies buy it every six months, four to six months, depending on the tariff they're under. And they buy it at the same time every year. We have a lot more flexibility in how we do ours and that's why we have a consultant like Patrick on board, who's very familiar with the market, helps us to pick when to buy it, what to look at. And if we go to buy it for a year, we can actually shorten that. If the market makes sense to shorten it, we can make it longer if it needs to make it longer. So we can play the market, whereas the utilities cannot. So at the end of the day, it's all about trying to save money for the citizens of Hanson. And it's also trying to give options to the citizens of Hanson to buy more green power. Because under the, there's a statute in the state of Massachusetts called the Renewable Portfolio Standard. And what that does is it requires the utility companies to buy a certain percentage of green energy already. We're at 20, I think 25, 26% right now, we're gonna be at 30% shortly. So that number goes up by 2% every year. And all we're trying to do is we're trying to buy 5% more than we're required to. That's it. Just a little bit more to be a little bit greener as we do things, at the same time, save ourselves some green too. With that, Patrick, it's all yours.
Awesome, great, no, thank you, Jim. So yeah, I'll just quickly share my screen here. So. So this is the program, it's officially called Hanson Community Power. And it's, there's a program website that is linked here so people can can learn more about it or find the plan that we're actually having a public hearing about today. So as Jim mentioned, this, there's sort of been quite a track record of trying to get here today. This is our second public review period. First one was in early 2022 and we revised the plan because in the middle of 22, the Department of Public Utilities had some new updates. And we briefed the the board and the public on that at a previous meeting, I believe it was in in August. And so, yeah, we've had this public review period open since August 10th with these new revisions. And having a public hearing tonight. And what we could do is, you know, is after the public hearing, if there's no comments that really suggest any substantive changes, would be the board could vote to approve submitting the plan to the Department of Public Utilities. They are the final approval step. There's this local approval and then there's the state state level approval. That will probably take at least a year. So it is, it'd be great to get started on that as soon as possible. Maybe we could, you know, be looking at launching next winter, you know, and maybe avoiding some of the price spikes that might happen, you know, next winter. The ones that Jim talked about that are happening in a a month or so are already made in. You know, we're not gonna be able to launch for that. And of course, I always need to say savings cannot be guaranteed. But but that would be, that would be what we could do. And I just wanna also, you know, remind everyone that that only after we're approved by DPU would we be able to go out to bid for electricity supply. And once we have done that, then we would do a big education and outreach period before the program starts so that people know that they can choose not to participate if they if they want to. So that would, that would be happening only kind of much further down the line once we have the approval of the Department of Public Utilities. So basically with that, this slide just has the the four different options that are that are in the plan that is built for public review. That standard product is the one that would be the the default. And as Jim said, it would have a little bit extra renewable energy, but we'd really try to be cost competitive with with national grid. Again, recognizing that savings can't be guaranteed. So that would be the goal. And we've had this this plan, revised plan now out for public review for over a month and we've gotten two comments in that time period. Both of them actually were more questions. They were wondering if the program was already live and how they could enroll. So we'll we'll be responding back to them to let them know that it's it's not not live yet. You know, maybe hopefully in a in a year from now or something like that. So there, yeah, that was really it. So I think with that, I would, I'd just say we could we could open up the the any public public comment here and then and take questions from from the board.
Does anybody have any comments?
I actually do. I'm I'm very new to all this. So this is the town buying bundles of electricity. Could this, what happened down in Texas happen up here with this situation where the amount of electricity that was purchased wasn't adequate for some catastrophic reason? I mean, down there, they had trouble. They they could not sell any more electricity, it was gone. Can that happen here?
It's, I suppose it's possible that could happen here. Your program would not change whether or not that could happen here. The issue that happened in Texas, and that's a good, a good question, is one about how the their regional grid operator determines how much electric electricity capacity is available on the grid. And in Texas, they didn't do a lot of things that would have didn't require a lot of things on the, at the grid level that would have prevented those things. Whereas thankfully here in New England, our our grid operator is, has been very proactive about making sure we have enough capacity and that we can manage, particularly in like severe winter storms or in in the summer with severe heat spikes where electricity demand really spikes up.
We are used to that, yes.
Yeah, it's it's kind of ironic you say that because the the ISO New England, which Patrick's talking about here in New England, they ironically have not grown the amount of electricity used in New England for over 10 years now. In other words, we've been using the same amount every year, even though we keep building, we keep growing. It's a lot of our energy efficiency programs. We have some of the oldest efficiency programs in the country. All that stuff is reducing the amount of energy that's being required. That combined with some of the code standards that actually requires less wattage per square foot. All of those things are bringing down how much a building uses. And they're also allowing us to grow the system loads. But with the Renewable Portfolio Standard, remember, what we've also done is we don't have any fossil, I mean, any fuel plants left in New England. All the coal plants are now shut down. They're all gone, if there's a plant left, they're natural gas. And even those are actually talking about shutting down because of the whole Renewable Portfolio Standard, where they're going to more renewable energy. And now in Massachusetts, two years ago, they filed a tariff to allow for more battery storage. So what they're looking at doing is a lot of the big problems is those peak periods, that one o'clock on that hottest day in August. So they're actually paying to put batteries into commercial entities so that they can manage you through those peaks. So the whole market, because our market is so far ahead of the rest of the country, we've been number one in our energy efficiency programs for over 12 years in the country. All of that stuff is participating towards mitigating the problems with demand issues like they have in Texas. Texas just started an energy efficiency program 10 years ago. They haven't had one, we've had it for 50 years.
Well, solar works wonderfully down there where it's hot and sunny all the time.
They still have incandescent bulbs.
Oh, do they?
Yes.
Well, that's their fault.
Okay.
Sorry, Patrick, I had to interject.
Thank you.
Did anybody? Yes, Mr. Hill and then Mr. Moss.
My my issue, the same one that I brought up last time you were here is is I I like the program, I think it's good. My only issue is I don't like forcing people into something where they need to opt out of. I would rather it be you opt into this program. You know what I mean? It's, yeah, we're gonna publicize it, everybody's gonna know. But the poor person that doesn't know that they're being, they they already have chosen a plan that that's perfect for them. And now, one day, that is gonna come along and it's gonna be this one if they do nothing.
Well, remember, I mean, I have, I may personally have a third-party supplier at my house. I use NRG right now. A couple of years, a year ago, I wasn't following it. I found out my electricity wave went from about 14 cents to 18 cents because I wasn't following it. And I'm an energy engineer, it's what I do for a living, but I wasn't watching myself. What this does is allows someone else to watch out for you on that that issue. And if you are in standard offer, National Grid is your supplier, those are the only ones we're going after. If you already have a third-party supplier, we're not even gonna go after you, that's not even part of the option.
You're saying if I have a, if I'm signed up with a third-party today, you're not gonna automatically switch me to the answered standard? I've heard differently, I'm not sure.
Patrick, am I correct on that?
Jim's correct and I apologize if that wasn't clear before, but yes, only those people who have not chosen their own third-party supplier would be allowed.
So I have to opt into it because I already have a third-party supplier?
Third-party supplier.
Right, so, but if I've chosen, I don't know. But if I haven't, I'm still gonna be, if I decide not to make, if I don't know to make a change, it's gonna change. I just don't like that idea. I don't, that's just my own, my own feeling. I I've never liked something that somebody else tells me I'm gonna do unless I don't do something. I mean, it seems like there's way too much of that going on in general. And and you, another thing you mentioned that we no longer have, I mean, this is not this program, but we no longer boil, we're getting rid of coal, we no longer have. Eventually, we're not gonna have a choice. It's gonna be whatever these people say we're gonna have. It's gonna be green and that's it. And that's for better or worse. I don't think we're gonna be able to maintain our electric costs. Our electric costs are gonna go through the roof, just my, just my two cents.
But Patrick, could you address? So let's say I fall asleep at the wheel and I don't realize that I have to opt out. I don't, I don't affirmatively opt out and I'm opted in automatically because I didn't pay attention to the timing. What can I do? Aren't I able to at any point in the future decide that I want to opt out?
Yes, you can opt out 30 days after the program starts.
Yep. Any, anytime, yep, you would be, if you realized you could say, yep, I want to be out, you'll be out on your next year, which is, you know, basically each month there's a year.
Okay.
And this has been going on across the state already and this is the same way, almost every program has been run the same way. No one else has had the option of having to opt in. They've always automatically come in and then allowed them to opt out.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying it's, that everybody else is doing it, I just, I just don't think it's the right way to do it. That's all my, that's just my, my two cents, but I, I, the, the program itself, I don't have a problem with it, just that one, one portion of it.
I think it's really, and I hear what you're saying and you're right, like all the financial services, everybody's doing like a negative election, they call it. They assume that you've elected for it, it's just the way of the world. But I think the key for this, Patrick, will be the education component that you were speaking about and making sure that we're publicizing it and, and in particular, targeting some of the groups that, you know, like seniors and, you know, that type of thing to make sure that people are really aware of the pros and cons so that they can make an informed decision.
Well, ironically, I'm going to speak for the committee now. We chose the company Patrick Works for Good Energy. One of the reasons we chose them was because they had the best that we could find of the public relations side to do the education of the public compared to their competitors. We were worried about what people would think. We wanted to pick someone who had the good PR side to reach out to people, that's why we chose them.
That's a good turnout, Jim. Mr. Weeks, any thoughts?
Yeah, totally agree with that. Yeah, the plan does have a kind of a draft education plan that we would then kind of refine as we get closer to launch, but it covers everything from in-person presentations, you know, particularly when, yeah, the council and agent are seniors and, you know, mail, social media, you know, virtual stuff. So, and we work with you, Patrick, in the committee to really make sure we identify all the, all the outlets that are the best ways to connect.
Did you have any comments, Mr. Weeks?
Ed kind of took, took that in the subsequent conversation as a result. I would just emphasize again, you know, people can opt out at any time for something like this. I, I kind of take a slightly different approach to it where I feel like National Grid's kind of the thing that everybody is being told they have to have and a lot of folks don't know necessarily enough. It's just my personal opinion. A lot of folks don't necessarily know enough and I might be one of them, that might still be too afraid to kind of take the leap as, to a third-party. I look at this as an opportunity for folks like me to know maybe what else is out there and then based off my experience with, with this program, might give me a little bit more, you know, a better idea and more tools to maybe if I do want to opt out of this someday and find a third-party that might be better on my own, it actually gives me a little bit more freedom and a little bit more better of a skill set to be able to do that. So I look at this as a kind of like more, more of a, we get more options going down this road than I think less.
I like that way of thinking about it because if you, if you kind of think about it, we're all automatically opted into National Grid.
Yeah, we're just told that we have to do that. That's why I like what you say. I, I don't like that option, which is why I like this, but I also like the idea of using this as a, as a launchpad to pursue maybe other things. Not to say that you're not doing great and I'm sure it'll work out, but I think that there's, this opens up a whole door, a new door of just different opportunities for folks.
You know, it's interesting when you say that because Jim was just pointing out to me, we brought this up at a town meeting. It was one of those, nobody questioned that at a town meeting. I thought it was fascinating that in the town meeting, no one questioned the opting out. But it's just something that because everybody accepted at a town meeting, it's a way to do it. So I just think that's kind of fascinating as well.
I'm not sure everybody believes.
Maybe they didn't understand that in that way. But you can't tell us, we haven't been trying to tell people because it's now over a year we've been bringing this up and going through it all. We've been trying to get it out there as much as possible.
But I think that's why I've, I've spent a lot of time reemphasizing that if people really don't feel comfortable, you can always opt out.
Yes.
It's like that.
Anytime.
Uh, Mr. Rain, any other thoughts?
No.
Okay, Mr. Hipton.
Patrick, I've been here since the beginning. I heard you made the comment twice. Once would have been okay, but you said it twice that you do not guarantee that Hanson Residents will save money. And you said it twice in your opening presentation. That bothers me a little bit or a lot. So what makes us want to do this if there's a possibility of not saving money?
Well, Patrick, let me ask it a different way. Of all the communities that have aggregated, has there been anybody who's paying more now than they were before?
So I'm very pleased to say that across our 40-plus programs in Massachusetts that are active, we have saved all of those communities money. If you're participating in those programs, you would have saved money compared to the utility rate. And particularly, I mean, this winter, it's going to be wild. National Grid has a rate that's going to be over 30 cents. Most of our communities are locked in somewhere around 10 to 11 cents. Maybe up to 12 cents. And I just want to, I totally hear that concern. Hey, why did you say that twice? The, the Department of Public Utilities has been, it's been very explicit that whenever we come close to suggesting that there are competitive rates for savings, that we have to say savings cannot be guaranteed. And they, I think partly they feel like they want to make sure that communities are not being misled into signing up for this program, thinking that it's somehow a guaranteed, you know, guaranteed win. And so it really just reflects the fact that we only know utility rates six months out at a time. We, you know, nobody is a crystal ball beyond that, so we cannot physically, you know, with 100% accuracy say we're going to guarantee savings. But like I just mentioned, I'm really proud of our track record, which is, 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 is making that happen. So I think that was one of the reasons that, that the committee chose us is because of our track record in delivering that and we would really be bringing that, the same, the same approach and, and skill set to procurement that has delivered those results to, to Hanson as we go forward.
All right, Patrick, thank you. You know Jim Armstrong is not a Hanson resident, right? We just, I want to make that. So Patrick, honestly, what would it cost us where National Grid is going up to, we'll say 30 cents? What would it, what's, what's the number right now?
We don't know until the market has opened. But you really, what it comes down to, Jim, is the market is so volatile that literally it changes all the time. And it really comes down to when you're going out to bid, understanding the market. I mean, right now, the market is high because of the demand is high and because the supply is low. The amount of power plants available, the amount of systems that are available. But as we're getting closer to the market, we're going to be working together with Good Energy to look at the market, to determine when we're going to go out to bid based upon what the market indicators are telling us.
Okay.
National Grid doesn't have that luxury. They go out to bid the exact same time of year, every year.
And did I hear Patrick right there that it's going to take a year?
Oh, yeah, at least to get through the DPU, yeah.
Okay.
So I, I can't tell you what's going to happen with the market right now, I just can't. I mean, I do this for a living every day too, so it's kind of like.
Well, you fuck around and buy your own house, we can't count on you.
I'm glad we locked in for the town.
I was, I was just supposed to say that. We, we've experienced the market when we were negotiating rates for the town. I mean, they skyrocketed, they went up, down, there was.
Mr. Malisi, thank you for your patience.
No problem. So National Grid right now has a lot of different programs for senior and elderly people with discounted rates, budget plans and things like that. Do those change under this plan? Will those prices go up or they go down? Do you guys have any alternatives?
This is only on the generation supply portion of the bill. All the rest of that rate stays the same, all the programs still are enabled. We do not take any of that away. We do not become your electric company. All we are is, if you look on your bill, there's a generation charge, that's the only portion of the bill that we can facilitate any change to.
Yeah, and just to add to that, so the, the low-income discount or the, that they refer to, it's a percentage discount on the entire bill.
So that percentage discount will still apply to the entire bill. And similarly too, your eligibility to participate in National Grid's energy efficiency programs and get those rebates, that is unchanged as well. So, and same thing with solar, same, you'll get the same, the same credit for your net metering credits if you're, if you're generating solar, it won't be affected.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Any, any closing comments that you wanted to make?
Well, the only comment we'd make is that due to the fact that we have no, I'm going to say significant modifications or requests, other than the one from the select one to, you know, make it non-mandatory, I'm just, just because that came up, I want to bring it up, I want to recognize it. But also recognizing the town meeting approved it as-is, I'm, I'm not sure if we have any changes we need to make. What I'm looking for with the board to make a recommendation to close the hearing and allow us to file with the state.
I will entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve and submit the plan to Public Utilities.
First, we have to close the hearing.
We'll close the hearing first?
And, yep.
So moves.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And?
Approve to submit the plan to Public Utilities for approval.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any further dis, second, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Okay, great. Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, Mr. Armstrong.
Madam Chair, I made a mistake. Jim Armstrong is actually a resident of Hanson. Does that make you feel better that it's on live TV?
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you. Oh, my God. Thank you, Patrick.
All right. Next up, we have got special town meeting review. And I can, where's Mr. Keely?
He stepped off for a little bit.
Why don't we go to our appointments? We've got zoning board appeals. Lynn, do you mind just getting Mr. Keely to tell him that what, oh, Mike, do you mind getting Mr. Keely?
Yeah, I don't know whether or not, he just went upstairs and whether or not it's, was running late for him in his department.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll figure that out when we get through that. So first up, we've got zoning board of appeals member, reappointment for Cushing and Prati. And as you recall, the last time that we had these appointments up, we had a suggestion from council that we only appoint for a month because we were supposed to be getting the investigation completed. And I really don't know what the status of that is on the screen.
So Mr. Lampke indicated that he is reading on material from building and board of health that he has requested.
Okay, when was that?
I got this email on 8/25.
Okay. I believe, if you could circle back with Mr. Donovan, I thought that he said Mr. Lampke was in the building last week and then he spoke to him, but I really don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you get that impression too?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay. But we, we don't have the results. So I, I guess we can, one more time with feeling, you know, appoint for a month and the reason being that if we appoint for the full term, then we have to have a hearing for Mr. Cushing and Mr. Prati.
Well, I would.
You can ignore, you can please leave, Mr. Perkins.
Sure.
You can, no, you, you can leave.
There's no need for that.
You can leave. Could you, we're going to take a break and Mr. Perkins is going to excuse himself. Okay, thank you, Paul. All right. So, so as I mentioned, the last time that we had this discussion, we had been given guidance, which still stands, that until we have the results from the investigation, that we ought not to make a permanent appointment. Now, I want to remind people that it was not the board unilaterally deciding that we were going to do this investigation. We had a citizen's petition presented at town meeting and it took 100, I think there were 100 and whatever, 6, 150 or at least 100 people who signed the petition and 167 people at town meeting who voted to have the board move forward with an investigation. So this was not this board just deciding we were going to willy-nilly do an investigation. And although I am disheartened at how long it's taken, I think that generally the board has been of the opinion that we want to be thorough in this investigation and that we are not going to, we don't want to close the investigation and not have Mr. Lampke feel as though he's done his due diligence. And I, the last, I think he spoke to you, Lisa, before you were on medical leave, was that you basically, he had some loose ends, that he had had a variety of reasons, none of which really matter at this point, for why this was delayed. But I think when Mr. Donovan spoke to him last week, I got the feeling it was imminent, like within the next couple of weeks. So that's, that's all I know about it. If you could circle back and get a definitive update, that would be amazing.
Okay.
And so we're kind of at the same point we were at the last time we met.
I have a text message from Kevin. His first week here, I asked Kevin to check on two things. The cell tower and while we still don't have service yet, he got a answer out of National Grid that they're waiting on a pod. And he spoke to Mr. Lampke and Kevin was told, and I have it on my phone, that the investigation would be done in a week or two. That was the first week Kevin was here, two weeks is up and it's still not done.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
So it wasn't a one-month reappointment, it was a three-month, this was back in June, I think.
Oh, okay, thank you, yeah.
So it was, it was June, it was July, August, September.
Yeah.
It was a three-month term and here we are. This was supposed to be done in June. This has been almost a year now and I think, this is my opinion, I believe, I understand you guys are doing what's in the best for just the citizens and doing a thorough investigation. But at the same time, if there is cause, you remove the members from the cause that you have. You just don't arbitrarily not appoint because you haven't got this back, the investigator has spent more than, you know, over a year now. And I think it's had more than enough time. I think that I would completely agree that if it comes back with the investigation and that there is cause, I would recommend that you remove, if you believe that cause to be enough cause to move. So that, you know, that being said, I, you know, I don't want a temporary appointment. I either want a full term and then remove me or don't, don't temporarily reappoint at all. At least that's how I feel.
Okay.
All right.
Any further discussion?
What was the reasoning from, for council for not doing a full term?
Because it, because you have to go through hearings for everybody versus if we get something back and we just don't think that it looks good, we don't have to do a hearing if, if their appointment is up.
If I may, Mr. Prati?
Yes, Mr. Prati.
Joshua Prati, zoning board. It sounds to me like not reappointing is, is more allowing you guys some latitude to, to not reappoint us if you don't like what you hear, not necessarily if there's any malfeasance found with that.
Oh, the hearing doesn't require malfeasance. We don't need to have malfeasance. We just have to have a hearing where we would have concerns and sufficient concerns that, you know, we would not feel comfortable reappointing. But it doesn't have to rise to the level of malfeasance, yeah.
Regardless, you know, maybe I used the wrong term. I, I just don't see why not reappointing is, or reappointing temporarily is even really an option. Because regardless, we're going to have to come back here in front of you if there is something or if there isn't something. So we're going to clog up an agenda regardless.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I tend to think that if we pay town council to give us an opinion, we ought to take town council's opinion. Otherwise, I don't see the point of even having town council. And I'm not going to try to play attorney, you know, and, and second-guess what the rationale is. That's, I'm just one person, so, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, whatever you guys, I'll, you know.
Well, three months ago, I brought it up that they should all be reappointed for full terms because the investigation was not done. It's three months later, it's still not done. If a month from now, if we reappoint them for a month and a month from now, the investigation is still not done, we're back here doing this again. My hope's that if they were reappointed for full terms and the investigation is finished, we have a hearing and that if there was wrongdoing by either of these gentlemen, that they would resign before the hearing. If not, we go through the hearing process, which I think would take less time than the investigation and keep reappointing them for a short amount of time.
I, I, you know, I, and I- I, I, you know, I, and I, I know...
And I said that before, no one seconded my motion.
Because, because that's going against what town council has suggested, honestly. That's why I couldn't second, second that. And I hear what you're saying, I mean, I think, you know, if Donovan's saying that he's, and I know he said he's physically, I think Lampke was in the building, looking for documents, I don't know what he was looking for, but I thought Kevin said that he physically spoke to him in the building, and that, um, and that he thought it would be, so I think that it is imminent. Um, and so, I mean, Mr. Cushing's saying he doesn't want a partial, um, appointment, um, which I can respect, um, but my feeling is that we have a duty to the citizens of the town, who asked to have this investigated, and asked for us to be prudent in what we're doing. And I, and although I, I really feel bad that it's taken this long, there isn't really much any of the five of us can do about how long it's taken. Um, we've gotten this gentleman to do a job, and he has to do the job he's been paid to do. Um, so I, I just, I don't know, I, I don't feel comfortable appointing both of them for the full term, particularly given the fact that the, the investigation is imminent, and that, um, we've been given advice by town council not to do that.
You were given advice from town council the prior three months, that he was supposed to be done by the end of July and beginning of August. Here we are, all through August, all through September, all through September, with Cushing October, and you really don't have a definitive date. You have, you have hopes that he'll be done in thirty days, but we're gonna be back here. We just missed a meeting tonight because we don't want to open meetings unless, I don't know if I'm gonna be here, when these, you know, when these meetings are so...
Well, how about this, when is your next meeting?
Tonight, we missed it.
When is your next posted meeting?
If I can interject, they're waiting upstairs.
Yeah, and, and, and there is no quorum tonight, um, there are no reappointments. I, you know, I'm just letting you know, and that's part of the issue. And like I said, I will resign, if you find cause, and you think you have enough cause to remove me, I will resign before I hear it. So I, I'll give my word on that, on the record. I, there is nothing you're gonna find. I think if you could have found it, you would already find it, that's why I was taking it so long. Really, and I will resign without a hearing.
My, my problem is that, and Billy, correct me if I'm wrong, anything that you two gen- and Sean, if you're sitting on something and you resign or are removed, all the work that's been done on that has to start over again?
And, and then it's opened up to possible, you know, legal ramifications with appeals and things like that. There's meetings that we're gonna open tonight that we did not sit on because I'm not sure I'm gonna be here at the next meeting, you know what I mean? So, I want a full reappointment.
So when is your next posted meeting?
Um, I would imagine we usually meet the second and fourth, we usually meet the same legs that you meet on, ironically. Um, so it's usually what, the second and fourth Tuesday of each...
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, you know what I mean? So, I listen, I'm not trying, I just said, I just told you on the record, I will resign if you have cause.
But of cour-, but of course, that's not binding, we can't...
It's not binding, I'm saying it on the record, that's all.
We're gonna go back and forth on this, so I'm gonna make the motion that Mr. Prati and Mr. Cushing get, uh, reappointed for their full terms. And again, it's not gonna be seconded.
Is there another motion that somebody would like to make?
Me, it's hard, because I'm incredibly frustrated with how long this has been going on. Voiced it many, many times. I feel like, um, we're in a position right now that, and I, I can't speak for everybody here, but I can speak for me. I have no idea what's going on with this investigation. I have no idea why it's taking so long. It drives me absolutely insane that it's taking this long. Um, again, I have no problem going on record saying that to whoever's listening, it's driving me insane. Uh, but we, uh, we've already committed this process, I'm hoping that we can see it through, um, because I don't know what's gonna come from it. Um, so I just say for the sake of trying to get through this, that we have to, because I, I mean, I've got the same, the same thing, saying that this was gonna be done by tonight. I was hoping that, that we were gonna have something, there was light at the end of the tunnel, that we were putting this on this, on here, so we could actually have this conversation more thoroughly. And I don't like the idea that, um, we've been going through this, you know, for longer than a year, because the investigation was a year, before that, it was long, dragged-out stuff. Um, so, I'm struggling with this, because I don't like the idea of the town being handcuffed, um, or having this weird ultimatum looming over our heads, that if we can't make a decision tonight, and you guys have been cooperative, absolutely cooperative, uh, through this process, which is fantastic, um, especially at these public hearings and, and bearing with us as we're trying to navigate this. Again, we don't know what's going on, no clue whatsoever. But, um, I'm hopeful, and I think we should put a little bit more, um...
Pressure.
...pressure to try to get this resolved, because we can't keep going down this road, because it's been said a thousand times over, that if the ZBA loses a quorum, then there's a whole bunch of ramifications. This is not news to us. I don't like the idea, and I'm super empathetic with where you're coming from, because you have to get an answer and all that stuff, but it also has legal ramifications that, that's not news to any, well, I don't know if this is anybody here, but to the board, it should not be news. Um, this is something that we've been thinking about in the back of our minds for a very long time, and it puts us in a very bad spot. Um, so, I, I, it's just a very long-winded way of gr- seemingly grandstanding, but I'm not. I, I don't know what the answer is. I, I would suggest that we continue on with incremental appointments until we get it done, but I don't know what the right timeframe is. So I don't know what a good timeframe would be. All I know is that this, the investigation's taken way longer than it, than it needed to.
Well, okay, so, um, Mr. Cushing does not want to be reappointed for a temporary term. So that means that the only, and Mr. Hickey's motion to appoint for the full term failed. So that means that the only appointment that we've got tonight, unless Mr. Prati says he also does not want to be a temporary term, would be Mr. Prati.
I would prefer not to be a temporary term.
Oh, but are you saying you won't be a temporary appointment?
Yes.
Okay, then we've got no motions to make tonight, um, and we're not reappointing Mr. Cushing or Mr. Prati.
Well, considering my resignation is my point, um, to my point of view, if we reappoint tonight and for a full term, resignation, I guess.
Okay, well, that's regretful, I appreciate the effort and the, um, time that you've both put in, um, but we're, you know, we really are in a position where we are trying to do what's in the best interest of this, of the town. And we got a very strong read from town meeting, um, and from the citizens' petition, um, begging us to look into this. So I don't see as an elected board how we could possibly do anything other than what we've been compelled to do. Um, so I hope you appreciate the position that we're in.
I do appreciate the position, and lastly, when you do get a copy, but I'd like to see it, and then at that point in time, um, if you'd like to reevaluate, um, if there's nothing, you want, you'd like to reappoint, then we'll be happy to come in front of the board at that time, or between now and then, I'm just, I don't know.
Okay, that, that seems, um, like a fair, um, statement, and I think in the interim, for the love of all that is, you know, can we please get an update? I would really like to look forward to a time when I don't have to discuss this anymore.
So I, I did ask Mr. Lampke today for an update. Um, and he's returned my email saying, um, "Did you see the email I sent last Thursday?" Well, as people know, I was not here last Thursday, so he must have sent it to Kevin Donovan. Because when I look at my emails, the last email I got from him was back in August 25th.
Alright, so can you circle back with Mr. Donovan?
So, I need to, yeah, I need to see, I've, I've asked, um, Mr. Lampke to send, resend the email to me, so I can see it. So, I've done that as the conversation's going on, so...
Okay, thank you. Okay, um...
Can I ask just one question?
Yep.
Could I get some clarification as to, uh, town council's reasoning for temporary reappointments as opposed to, um, a longer appointment?
Yeah, as I mentioned, I, I mentioned it, well, it was three months ago, so you might not have remembered. Um, so, um, as I mentioned the last time, um, the, the thought process was that hearings are painful, they're expensive, you know, you've got right to counsel, blah, blah, blah. If something comes of, of, you know, the, whatever this investigation comes up with for you and Cushing, and again, this is all hypothetical, because I, we have no, none of us know what, what depths this man is plumbing that is taking so long, um, or, you know, or, we just literally have no idea. The only people that have been speaking to him have been Ms. Green and Mr. Donovan, um, and they've been very cryptic with us about what's being, necessarily so, because we don't want to influence, we don't want to be part of the investigation. The thought process was, that avoids two hearings, if, if there's something there, we just simply don't reappoint you. And then we have to have hearings for whomever else it might be, that there's some meat on the bone. And it may end up that there's no hearings, we don't know, we literally don't know. Um, so that was the thought process. So, Mr. Melissie.
Sorry, I don't wanna get thrown into this conversation, but I was just curious about what kind of, what kind of liability does it leave the town not having a ZBA that has a war?
We're gonna have to circle back with legal counsel and figure that out. Um, but I don't see any other way, given what Mr. Prati and Mr. Cushing have said tonight, I don't, you know, see any other way. Um, given that their, um, next meeting isn't until the second, um, Tuesday of October, which I think we're...
11.
...to meet, which is the 11th. Um, I guess the only other option would be for us to see if somebody else wants to fill those seats, um, until the investigation is completed. I, I don't, I don't even know what that looks like. Um, so we'll, we'll have to have a conversation with legal counsel, honestly. Um, because I, I'm concerned, I don't wanna, I don't want to have folks that may not necessarily have the right qualifications sub in, because it is, I, I don't necessarily think people fully appreciate, um, the depth of knowledge that people have to have to be on that board. It isn't your garden variety, just anybody off the street can do the job. Um, I know people may think that, but that's not true. Um, so, I, I'm, I'm concerned, so we'll have to figure that out.
Madam Chair, if I may as well? And, um, you know, just to, just reiterate that, we, we don't want to give the impression that we're trying to rush the investigation, for just the impression that we may have flawed it because we tried to rush it. Um, we can't, we can't take that chance. So, yes, we're...
Can I just comment on that real quick?
Sure, Mr. Perkins, yeah.
Given the amount of time, is it really reasonable to say at some point that you rushed it if you, if it's gone past like a year, and you're like, listen, this needs to be done now?
It's a valid point.
I would say at some point, you know, you, you've been well past the point where you've rushed it.
I think we're honestly getting to the point where we're all like, just give us whatever you've got, for the love of God.
It's also...
Right, but I, I don't want anybody to get the impression that we or the board have, have rushed it, and now it's, it's considered flawed.
I think she's saying she doesn't want the investigator to say, well, you guys rushed me, so I didn't, you know, I didn't finish up the job.
Do you reasonably say at this point?
Probably not, probably not.
I don't know, I, honestly, from my perspective, I mean, what was it, forty hours, something like that, thirty hours?
Yeah.
Something that was, that was allocated? So it's forty hours. I, I, again, I can't emphasize this enough, I have no idea. I'm assuming none of us have any idea as to what's going on at all.
Was it hours or dollars? I don't know, it doesn't matter, but anyway, yeah.
But I think, you know, I don't know what's happening in the background. I don't know if people are calling on time, sending in the information on time, it's, I like to think that if, you know, the information is, is being either streamlined or easy to get, that it, it wouldn't take this long, so is the information easy to get and is it streamlined? I have no idea. All I know is that it's, it's, it's taken an absorbent amount of time, and we're not getting any updates as to why. For me, that's where the, the real frustration's coming from, is I don't know where or why the delays are coming. Um, from that perspective, I have, I have no, no clue. And, and it's hard to do this, because to Lisa's point, um, you, you can't, you can't poke and prod, you can't get involved, because then all the work that's already been done, that everybody's already done their, their civic duty of, of being cooperative and engaging in, can go right out the window the minute something like that, that pops up. So you have to be able to...
So, Ms. Green, I'm wondering, when we have you reach out to Mr. Lampke, could you get a sense of what exactly it is that he is needing to do before he puts a bow on this?
I, I've already done that. I've asked him what is holding up the investigation results, so I've already sent the email.
Can we ask for a date? Say, hey, bye?
We've, we've done that, three or four times.
Has he responded with a date?
No, right, no, it's true, but I think, and that's a great point, because for me, I remember seeing something somewhere saying that it was gonna be two weeks. Those are, that was two weeks ago.
True, yeah.
So that's, so what, I think that's a reasonable question, to not make it, you know, not give the impression that we're trying to pressure anything, but when someone volunteers a timeframe, and then it's not met, I think we have a right to, to know that answer.
Yeah, so...
I have a question, I'm, I'm oblivious to all of this, but, um, why is, why is town council not here tonight if this is, uh, an important decision that town council has met? And you didn't have the answer...
This is not something that we would need town council here to discuss tonight, and we pay, we...
But what you're basing your decision on, because you said because of town council, you felt this so, that you didn't want to...
Well, that was, right, that was an opinion...
And Mr. Hickey had put that out, and everybody else is apprehensive, and I believe it has to do with town council giving you direction, and if this was so important, why weren't they here tonight? You know, do you have to pay the town council?
Because we pay, we pay for the, for them by the hour, Mrs. Joyce, and we already had them for the dog hearing. And honestly, I didn't think that it was going to get into this...
Well, the dog hearing, I mean, they must have spent all, uh, two hours on that, and this is more important, I'm thinking, why, I mean, precedence, I mean, I'm just a, a citizen here, you know, and I'm sitting observing what's going on, and I mean, something as important as this, and it's been delayed for so long, because...
It will be, okay.
That's another situation with something else that I have coming up too, because we have postponed a, um, a hearing that we had appealed and put in two weeks, um, in, in, uh, you know, and I'm speaking with, um, Lisa tomorrow, I have an appointment with her to find out what's going on in another situation, and it's based on what town council has represented, that we should not be, if it has anything to do with the road situation...
Miss, we are not supposed to discuss that, Mrs. Joyce.
So I understand that, but what I'm saying, it all stems back to town council, and it seems as if...
You've made your point, Mrs. Joyce, understood, thank you.
Well, I'm just saying, town council...
We understand.
...should be reviewed.
We, we understand, Mrs. Joyce.
For dogs, uh, I mean, that's...
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so Lisa, can you reach out and get a date? And honestly, can you just ask, is there a reason why we couldn't get it by next Tuesday?
Sure, yes, I can.
Um, that would be...
I'm asking you to do that.
Has he exhausted the seventy-five hundred dollars yet? I mean, where is he at in the budget?
Lisa is just back from medical leave, so I don't know that she knows that at this point, but it's a fair question.
Yeah, I think that's the answer, because if he's only used twenty hours at this point, and he's, he's allocated forty, and he's done his hourly rate at seventy-five hundred dollars, and he's only billed for twenty, well, there's a problem there, that's all, I just wanted to make that clear.
Madam Chair, if I can just maybe close this up?
That would be amazing.
Lisa will, uh, have a written, uh, um, tomorrow morning, but I'm gonna resign as the liaison to the zoning board, um, and I'll have that on your desk. Uh, I can't, you know, keep making motions and not have anyone back them, so I think one of the other four members may be better suited, um, to help out, uh, who's ever left on the board.
Okay, so we'll put, um, a, um, liaison appointment for ZBA on our next agenda. Mr. Weeks?
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Cushing, Mr. Prati, and the resignation of Mr. Hickey as a liaison to the zoning board of appeals.
I am looking for a second.
Second.
All in favor? And...
Yeah.
Okay, of, of all three things, okay, I just wanted to make sure. Um, okay, um, alright.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes, Mr. Prati.
When the results of the investigation do come back and do...
We'll share them with everybody, yeah.
I would be willing to, uh, accept, uh...
A reappointment, okay.
A reappointment to the zoning board.
Okay, thank you. So you guys are kind of on the same...
Yes, exactly.
Okay, alright.
Hopefully it gets adopted.
And we're really hoping to get closure on this, that would be great. Alright, thank you. Alright, now we are on Matthew Dyer, Hanson member to Indian Head River Restoration Steering Committee. And Matt has turned into a pumpkin, I know, he... I know, he
I'm sorry.
He hung in there.
Make a motion to approve the appointment?
Okay, great. And I hope, I think there was something in here from Mr. Clemens talking about, you know, that he had recommended that Matt Dyer be the representative. And I think it's great that Mr. Dyer wants to get back into the fray and help out, and this is definitely something he's passionate about. So I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? All right, great.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
What is the Indian Head River Restoration Steering Committee?
Well, he, she, he kind of gets into this with the
Oh, okay.
Yeah, in his little letter.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Becky Malm, and I'm with the North and South Rivers Waterworks Association.
Oh, okay.
So I'd be happy to just catch up quickly. My first one, I'm
Yeah, that'd be great. And I'm awfully sorry that you had to sit through all that. Okay.
Yes, so we applied, Hanson, Hanover, and Pembroke provided letter support for the North and South Rivers Waterworks Association to apply for a grant for funding for a feasibility study to look at the potential of removing the Curtis Crossing dam and the Indian Head dam. We did some, we received those funds and the results of that funding. I was hired to oversee the project, and what we're trying to do is create steering committee to work together so that all three towns can have a shared vision of what the project will look like. The grant will cover the study itself, I'll have education and outreach around it. General, the steering committee is to have somebody from each community who can act as a liaison to the community, provide the information back to the community, also provide us with information about communities' concerns, best ways to do public outreach and connect us to the community. So it seems like that would be a great
Oh, he's going to be great. He's very passionate about this.
Yes. General, we're really to understand all sides of the conversation, and I think the real benefit here is that the study itself is already paid for. So we're not going to be asking citizens to approve funding, but approve a project.
Is this the same thing that you kind of did at the third hearing, Brooke, over Noel?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Well, we're thrilled that you included Hanson, because sometimes we get forgotten.
Oh, so
So thank you for including
Yeah, no, you guys have a little part of it.
Yep. Great. Thank you.
Great.
And so we moved second in and approved, right?
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic. And then we were moving on to
Move it on.
And thank you so much for hanging in there. I'm sorry about that. And we've got Robert Bousquet, alternate to the Council of Elder Affairs.
Make a motion to
Second. Okay. All in favor? And I might just say, Ms. Bousquet is very good about posting on Facebook all kinds of elder affairs issues, and so I think she'll be a great. And we are actually not going to be approving the open session minutes. We had some tweaks that needed to be made to those, and we hope to revisit those minutes at our next meeting. So we are now going into our special town meeting review. And I don't honestly think it will be that long, and now I've just called the universe in on us. But, so, we, I think the best way to do it is we'll just have, did somebody want to volunteer to read the articles, which normally would have been Sean? And Sean will be reading them at town meeting, which is a recipe that we've used at the last couple of town meetings. It started during COVID, but it ended up working out really, really well in terms of cohesiveness. Instead of jumping back and forth with different people reading articles, Sean reads them. And then if somebody needs to, you know, if somebody needs to provide explanations, you know, then they can do that.
So just the article itself, a little paragraph blurb, not the spreadsheet below it?
Yeah. So did somebody want to volunteer to be that person? Or we could just walk through them one by one if you guys want?
I will if nobody
As long as you read fast, go for it.
All right. So just read the, if you can read the blurb and then we'll start there.
Start with a greeting, or did that?
No, we don't need to do a greeting yet, for the love of my
Article one, to see if the town will transfer from free cash a sum of money to pay the following unpaid bills from the prior fiscal years, or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay. And this is just a housekeeping item, and FinCom voted four to zero, Select Board five to zero, so I don't think there's really, Mr. Dugan, was there anything you wanted to discuss about that, or?
No, not on that article.
Okay, all right. Article
Article two, to see if the town will vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article two dash 12, classification and compensation by delivering sections, by deleting sections 11A through 11E in its entirety, and inserting in new sections 11A through 11E as printed below.
And was there anything on that, Mr. Dugan?
No, just that when this does come up at town meeting, reiterate that these are setting ranges, not funding anything.
Yep. And, yeah, is that in our explanation? Should, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, I hear what you're saying. So, yeah, that is important. All right.
We can also discuss that as well, and there's no issues with the wage and personnel.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just have a quick question.
Yep.
So on the article that Mr. Hill just read, Article one, it says to see if the town will transfer from free cash a sum of money. However, if you look at tab number one, Article one states there, to see if the town will transfer from available funds. So I just want to clarify, is it free cash or available? Is it free cash that we want to
Well, I think you'll have to talk to our accountant, town accountant, Ms. Green.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Donovan worked with him on this, so
Okay.
Did you have any insight that might
Well, the reconciliation does have that as being paid from free cash.
Okay. All right. So Article two, we're good. Article three?
Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $28,705 to supplement appropriations previously voted at the annual town meeting of May 2022 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, for various town departments, or take any other action relative thereto.
Anything on that?
No, well, I'll take this opportunity because we do have that open and would look to resolve that on town meeting floor.
Okay.
The rationale for the reason open was still unclear on the IT salary reclassification. An explanation that I had gotten back indicated that the range had, and in fact, it's in your books in tab three, was an exchange between Mr. Donovan and myself in terms of just trying to get some clarity on that. And his response was that the wage and personnel article was not correctly submitted in the last town meeting and ended up restricting the ability to grant standard 2% wage increases to some officials. And that the current IT director is paid at a rate of $90,000, but it should be $91,552. The range would keep up with the positions within the market. That led to a couple of questions for us to, we can hopefully clarify. One is this, the range to me denotes back to Article two in terms of, and that's one of the items in bold, in terms of updating the range from line I, from 60,000 to 90,000, to 60,000 to 115,000. And the amount of question here, but the article reads to raise and appropriate, so this to me seems to be funding a $15,000 increase to the salary line.
I don't think that's the intention. Ms. Green, is that the intention, to give Mr. Moberg a $14,000 increase?
Yes, it is. I don't recall the board of members, we had a conversation, and I'll have to look at the minutes on what meeting that was regarding the IT director's salary being well under, from what other towns pay the IT directors. So there was a conversation to increase his salary, the $15,000, and, but what we did was we increased the range to make sure that gave us, again, it's a range. But he is well underpaid for an IT director, who is a single IT director for an entire town. That's how we lost Ryan to East Bridgewater. And right now, IT directors are in high demand, so we need to do what we can to hold on to him.
Okay. So I hear what you're saying on that. I would say to you that if that is the intention, that we ought to make sure that we have some competitive analysis that we are prepared to discuss at town meeting, because the obvious question that will be asked is, I mean, you know, we don't want to just shoot from the hip and say, we think he's being underpaid. We need some, you know, cold, hard facts. So, did anybody have any other comments? Mr. Dugan?
No, I think that based on that answer, we looked at that saying, we're looking for some justification as to an explanation on a 15% raise, where, you know, basically everybody else in town is, has those 2% raises. I understand the comments of not wanting to lose somebody, but I'm going to end up sounding like a broken record in terms of, as we look at our operating budget, as we look at it, trying to wrap our arms around next year, unfortunately, every dollar counts.
It does, but talent does too. And if you lose talent because you're not paying them properly.
But if we're using our piggy bank to fund the bringing people in, you don't pay your mortgage from your piggy bank. You pay it from your job because that's concurrent income to support a concurrent expense that's going to be year after year after year. I think that using free cash to continue to fund our operating budget is a recipe for disaster.
Okay.
Well, that's a good point. But I still think we have to pay the guy what he's worth.
And again, no, don't take, I want to make this point clear, is that for some of the other, there's two other points that our committee overall was not in agreement with, and both of those would be along the same lines of additional dollars for personnel. And it has nothing to do with, is there a need? I'm not going to argue that at all. But are we going to have the funding there to support this going forward?
I would just make the argument, just moving forward, that let the tone be set that, you know, any type of salary increase or any type of large percentage increase, just the go-to needs to be that we have to be able to justify it, because every single person that works here warrants, because of their talent, more money. Every single one of them does. So just simply saying that, you know, the talent or we might lose them, it's not going to be enough for the townspeople. So I think we have to really just, you know, buckle down and say, these are the facts as to why, this is, and let the townspeople decide based off of that, to your point. Because, you know, it's a valid claim, but anybody can make that claim that their talents are worth much more.
All right. So you haven't voted, but, okay.
No, but we clarified that prior to town meeting for formal recommendation.
All right. Article four, Mr.?
Article four, to see if the town will vote to amend Article six of the May 22 annual town meeting to amend the approved Recreation Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year 22, and to transfer $80,000 from the Recreation Commission retained earnings account to the FY 2023 Recreation operating budget, or take any other action relative thereto.
Any discussion on that? It's both voted to recommend, so I think we're good on that. Ms. Diaz, did you have anything that you wanted to? I mean, there really isn't a need to say anything, but I, but, you know, you've got your plan, you're working your plan, you're planning your work. Okay. All right. We're looking forward to seeing how you guys do on that.
What we are working on, continuing to work on the plan.
Article six, Mr. Hill.
Did we skip five?
Oh, I'm sorry. Article five, sorry.
Article five, to see if the town will vote to amend Article seven of the May 2022 annual town meeting to amend the approved Transfer Station Enterprise Fund budget for fiscal year 2022, and to transfer $239,752 from program revenues, and $165,000 from retained earnings to supplement the funding of the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund budget, or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay. I think that's
Is that what you were asking her about?
Yeah, but, so that's fairly self-explanatory, and I think we've had Ms. Panetti and Ms. Diaz talk to us about it, and I know you've talked about it in some, in your more recent border health meetings, that you are going to try to find ways to decrease the amount that you're looking for from the town. And that's all you can do, with the recognition that you're probably never going to be a cash cow. And that's, those days are probably long gone. Yeah, yeah. Not unless something drastic changes with recyclables in China. Okay. Article six, Mr. Hill.
Article six, to see if the town will vote to transfer the following sums of money from the sources as more specifically identified below, to be expended for the following capital equipment and capital projects for various town departments, or take any other action relative thereto.
I mean, it's, you know, security cameras, infrared pavement recycler, ventrac sidewalk, I think, all needed. I don't think there was any, you know, was there any controversy amongst the FinCom?
We just had a follow-up question in regards to the sidewalks, metal removal, relative to the existing piece of equipment, and based on the department head's response, we were in agreement with this, and we did have a vote on this article that we did recommend it with a four oh vote.
Okay, all right, good. That's great. Because the highway guys told me on Saturday at Hanson Day, they need this, so, and they were saying that they can do amazing things with this piece of equipment, so. Okay. Article seven, Mr. Hill.
Article seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer $8,000 from free cash to retain the services of a qualified Massachusetts-registered engineering firm to conduct a roadway and drainage infrastructure study of Litchfield Lane and Proudfoot Way, and prepare a report of the findings for submission to the Hanson Planning Board and Hanson Select Board, or take any other action relative thereto.
And this was the one, I think we had Mr. DeFray talk to us about. This was a situation where everything was in place for the town to accept this road, but things were not filed in a timely manner, and so they want to just kick the tires and make sure that there hasn't been any incredible deterioration of that road since the time it was originally voted on by town meeting to be accepted. If this comes back and it looks as though, you know, there really hasn't been any type of an issue there, then the next step will be at the May town meeting, we'll have this as a warrant article. One more time of feeling to accept Litchfield Lane and Proudfoot Way. Okay, Mr. Hill.
Article eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer $15,000 from free cash for the demolition of the building at 1157 Main Street, or take any other action relative thereto.
I think that's pretty self-explanatory. And Mr. Dugan, you guys voted for it. I think that's going to be a nice little addition to clean up just a little corner of Main Street, and we'll take everything we can get.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, oh, sorry, Mr. Melissa.
Will we amend the town meeting to say McQuan instead of the Main Street building?
Yes, but I don't think
They would cost more than $15,000.
I don't think we could do that for $15,000, Mr. Melissa. We are RFPing on McQuan.
We'll have him mispronounce Main Street as McQuan.
We have an approved article on that.
Huh?
I said, we did have an approved
We did, but we
But that cost isn't going to come close now.
Correct. And we're also questioning the integrity of the data that might have been used to get that quote, and that's all I can say about that. Okay, Mr. Hill, Article nine.
Article nine, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Hanson Land Use Regulation zoning bylaws by amending Section 11, subsection 1, special requirements for medical marijuana facilities and marijuana establishments to allow for delivery in industrial zones as followed, as follows, or take any other action relative thereto.
Now, this particular article is, it's critical that it is emphasized that this is not allowing a brick and mortar store, that it is simply allowing delivery, that medical delivery is already happening within the town to people in town, and that this is allowing people to base themselves in town and deliver both recreationally and/or, if they apply, then medically.
I know it's too late to change, but delivery in industrial zones confused me. You know, it's delivery from industrial zones. I mean, it's
Well, I think our legal counsel worked on the language, Mr. Hill.
Yeah, I know, so I'm not
And I think she mirrored the zoning, you know, so, yeah. I understand what you're saying. It sounds like you're just delivering in there.
Delivering to industrial zones.
To everybody in the industrial zone.
Is that Article nine?
Yeah. Did anybody, now, Ms. Green, I want to make sure that LaFleur, LaFleur and Impressed both sent us the information that we requested that was not necessarily available a few[1791.06] available a few weeks ago, the last time we met. Uh, but we now have that information. Um, I forwarded it to all of you. Um, I want to make sure that that information, uh, that Mr. Keely is aware, that they may need five to 10 minutes to do a very short and pithy, um, presentation. Um, and that materials, they've got a good little depth that they've put together that's got quite a bit of detail about what their protocols are going to be and what the regulations are, that those materials are available for people to pick up, um, along with any other materials that the town clerk asked for town meeting. Uh, and this is something I had mentioned to, uh, Mr. Donovan when he was here. Um, and I also emailed to you and Lynn the other day that I want to make sure that, that that provision is made for a presentation and then for the materials to be available. Um, we don't want to be caught, uh, flat-footed as we have been in the past, um, and not having sufficient information to answer questions or concerns that people might raise about cannabis. Um, any other discussions on that? Uh, Mr. Dugan, were you guys?
No, it's, if I'm going to be sitting here saying, we can't spend on this, spend on that, I, I feel that I can't necessarily say no to potential revenue opportunities.
Okay. And we, we agree with you. And, Mr.?
This is what you're talking about.
Um, I sent it today. Did you print it out today?
Yeah.
Okay, then yes.
It's the exact same thing.
No, there's a, there's a, um, I sent you four different emails. Some of them are tweet, yeah, I sent them this morning.
Okay.
That did not come in.
I will say, I kept getting weird bounce-back messages. So Lynn, or Lisa, I think you were copied on them.
I got one from you.
Okay. Lisa, can you make sure that you forward them to everybody?
I will.
So you're saying you did, you, you got the same document as you did before?
There were four attachments.
But he's saying one of them at least has not changed.
No, but I emailed to everybody's town email address. I forwarded, um, the four attachments that were sent this morning. It doesn't matter for tonight's discussion, but I do want to make sure you guys have got them before next week. So you can take a look at them.
I know I didn't get it up.
Okay. Then if you guys can make sure, and I'm going to have to check with Steve because I kept getting weird bounce-back messages. Um, I, I literally tried for like a half an hour and I thought it finally went through.
Bounce-back message that you mentioned to me, a different, on a different occasion, um, on an email that I had sent. Or there's something going on.
That would be the understatement. Okay. Um, the next one, Article 10, Mr. Hill.
Uh, Article 10, to see if the town will vote to transfer $40,000 from free cash to replenish the Conservation Fund, or to make any other action relative thereto.
Okay. And I think that's pretty self-explanatory. We know there've been delays.
The only comment I would make on this is, we kind of look at this article every year. And the question that came out of our committee was, we're replenishing the Conservation Fund, but nobody really knew what was in the Conservation Fund. And are we, is there $2 in there or $2 million in there?
So did you ask the?
We did. And the, uh, the, the thriving balance was $3,078.
Okay.
So my point of this is that not only did we support this going forward, but at least that gives some perspective into the need for replenishing.
And I think Mr. Clemens alluded to how low it was going, but I don't know if he gave us exact dollars. So we are in fact replenishing.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, that's good insight, Mr. Dugan. Um, okay. Article 11.
Article 11, to see if the town will vote to replace the properties identified in Assessor's Map 106, lots 7 and 10-1, and Assessor's Map 98, lots 10, 11, 12, and 15, into the care and custody of the Conservation Commission for Open Space Protection under Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution, or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay. And I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Um, okay. And Jim, this was not the article that you voted against, right? Because I'm just, I'm looking at the vote and I'm just...
Me?
Yeah, this was not the article that you voted against.
No.
Okay. All right. Um, okay. Um, Article 12, Mr. Hill.
Um, Article 12, to see if the town will vote to transfer $26,488 from free cash to fund an additional 16 hours per week for the Conservation Agent position, making the position full-time at 35 hours per week, or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay. And, um, we voted to defer to town meeting. Uh, Mr. Clemens made an impassioned plea to us about the need for it. And although none of us doubt the need for it, um, the optics and timing were of concern. Um, but we didn't want him to feel as though we weren't supporting him. So we said, let town meeting make that decision. Um, where are you, did you guys vote subsequently?
We had a formal recommendation not to recommend, based on our comments before in regards to adding, uh, but I think the committee's overall viewpoint probably doesn't differ too much from your summary that you just made.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, Article 13, Mr. Hill.
13, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $22,034 from free cash to the, to be added to the selectmen's budget to hire a part-time administrative assistant in the selectmen's office for 15 hours per week, or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay. And, um, uh, Ms. Green, I want to make sure that when this article is presented, um, that we have got a, the competitive analysis that Mr. Donovan put together, um, indicating what other towns of a similar size have got for staffing, and that we also have got, um, something that is put together that indicates what those duties will be for this person. What is not getting done with the current staff and what will get done if we're able to get this part-time position. Um, I think those are the questions if I was sitting in the audience, I would want to know. Um, and so we need to anticipate that and prepare and have that information.
So I do have a job description prepared. Um, do you want more than just a job description?
I think you need to differentiate what is not getting done now without this person. What are we not going to be able to move the needle on if we don't have this person? Mr. Weeks?
I just want to add to that as a, as a strategy to, to put together a, a good presentation. You're gonna, your, your pushback is going to be what the previous administrative assistant was able to do without ever complaining about it, or ever, um, giving the inclination that it was undoable. So you're not just going to be playing with, using a job description. You're, you're going to be trying to convince a lot of folks that, uh, something that seemed to be impossible that was done for so long, so well, um, can no longer be done, or cannot be done with just one person because she set the bar so high. It's just really important that we, as a board and, and through you, really set that tone that what she was able to accomplish was amazing, but it really isn't something that just one person can do. Cause that's going to be your biggest pushback.
And I'd take it a step further. Yes, 100% agree with that. Um, and many of us know she was putting in 60, 70 hours a week. That is a non-sustainable model. I would also say that we don't want to just get by as a board anymore. We want to take it to the next level. We want better communication, better website, better citizen engagement. And in order to do that, we need additional staff because what we have now is barely getting us through the day-to-day.
So I think to that point, just again, I, 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 it's not about what can't get done then. It's about what will get done. It's like, you know, it's, cause I, it just, there's a lot of different components here. I just think that you're, you know, the previous administrator set, uh, the administrative assistant set the bar so high. You're going to add a person. So it's not about what can't get done. It's about how this is going to fill that role, how much this previous person worked. And that it really is, if you think about it, 60, 70 hours a week is a job and a half. So the hours are there. And then this is what we're going to be able to accomplish with this, with this role. Set the tone for the future.
Any other discussion?
Proactive instead of reactive.
I like it. Uh, that's our motto for town meeting. Um, okay. Uh, Mr. Dugan.
Uh, unfortunately, just consistent with our message, uh, on that. And, um, in regards to the, the staffing survey that's in the books, um, you know, I guess would our line 20 that indicates just one person in the selectmen's office, does that now need to be updated?
Uh, wait, I'm sorry. Uh, oh.
Tabs, the last page in the tab.
Yep. Wait a minute. What tab is that under 13? Oh, no. Well, if you read, this count does not include the position of town administrator.
Okay.
So that, that is accurate as, as we speak. Yep.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep. Um, okay. So, yeah, cause I initially was like, um, okay. Um, any further discussion on that? Okay. And, and I, I really honestly think that if it comes to it, um, and if you guys feel, um, as strongly about it as I do, then I think this would be the time for each of us to speak about what our opinions are about why we need this. Um, we've got it in the warrant because we think it's needed. And, you know, and we want to support Ms. Green and Ms. McDowell doing their job and giving them additional support. And in order to do that, we need this help. And I think, you know, if, if, it shouldn't be in the warrant if we don't feel strong enough to say something about it and advocate for it. Um, this is one of the few articles that I would say is not sort of just, you know, like the daily type of thing that we just resuscitate every town meeting. This is one that we individually decided we wanted to put in there. So that's my soapbox on that one. All right. Um, Mr. Hill, moving right along, Article 14.
Article 14, to see if the town will vote to transfer $50,000 from free cash to the townwide fuel account, which covers all-time vehicles, including police and fire, gas and oil, or take any other action relative thereto.
I mean, I, I think that's going to be a hard one to argue about, um, because-
Everybody's buying gas.
We know. We know the reality. Although I did see somebody post that prices are going down. But anyway. Um, all right. Um, Article 15.
Article 15, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $74,000 from free cash for townwide stormwater management and MS4 permit-related items, or take any other action relative thereto.
Uh, I mean, it's, you know, this is imminent. It's, you know, breathing down all of our necks. Uh, the sanctions for not complying are pretty severe. Um, so it's needed.
Only two cents on that, if I may, is we asked a little bit about this. This is year four of a 10-year plan, um, with those numbers fluctuating here or there. And the discussion was is that if this is going to be an annual expense for at least the next five or six years, is this something we think we need to think about moving into the budget?
That's an excellent point. And, um, okay. Yep.
Article 16.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought that you were going to hand me for it.
Is that for stormwater management, a particular study that we did for stormwater management there, or is that for the townwide stormwater management?
No, it's for stormwater management and MS4 permit-related items. So he's saying the money will be used for engineering, mapping, inspections, testing, screening, and surveying required for compliance with the town's municipal separate stormwater management system.
Uh, the only reason I bring that up is because I actually talked to Lisa about this. It's funny that I didn't realize it was on the article. But, um, some of those ARPA funds, um, that we have that we would not be using for McQuon can be used for stormwater management. So instead of taking that $70,000 out of free cash, it might be a good idea to talk with the county treasurer to see if we can use those stormwater management funds, um, from ARPA that we have there as well, so we save ourselves $70,000 in stormwater management.
Can we amend that on the floor?
Um, I think we probably need to talk to the town accountant. And I'm not sh, I hear what you're saying, Frank, but, um, we did not incorporate ARPA into this, um, town meeting because we're trying to be strategic about the way that we're using that money. But you've got a valid point. Um, yeah.
If you want to save any money on that, and that's a possibility, because I know you guys have money set aside for McQuon, but then there's an additional amount of money that you could possibly use for something like that. So, you know, that's, that's what I'm saying about that.
Okay. So add that to the list of things to talk to Mr. Hassett about. Um, okay. Um, Article 16.
Uh, Article 16, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of money from available sources to the townwide retention pond cleaning fund to be expended on retention ponds located on publicly owned property in conjunction with adhering to town, the town's stormwater and drainage MS4 compliance, or take any other rel, action relative thereto. Easy for me to say.
And, um, Mr. Dugan, did you guys vote on this one?
Uh, yes, we did. I think, um, the only follow-up we had was, um, when we saw the, the first pass of it in mentioning pond management, uh, the question was, selectmen's budget as pond management, and could that be funded under that? And, uh, there is an explanation from the highway director that it's for the cleaning of three retention basins in subdivisions along public ways that is required as part of the stormwater management program.
Okay. So you feel-
Right.
-good about that. So did you guys vote to recommend that one?
Yes, we did.
Okay. All right. Um-
Just, I think that, um, with the articles being renumbered after your last meeting, uh, might have thrown things off here a little bit.
Okay. Fair enough. Um, okay. Article 17, Mr. Hill.
Article 17, to see if the town will vote to change the name of the Recreation Commission to the Camp Kiwanee Commission, or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay. And, um, okay. I don't think there's a lot of controversy. I say that and I've now called in the universe, but they shouldn't.
That's going to be 11:30 town meeting question.
Okay. Hopefully not. Um, okay.
Can I just say, I think the only question is going to be the same question that I had last meeting is, you know, is there still going to be a Recreation Commission?
That's going to come up.
That's going to come up.
Yeah. So I think, um, it's saying that it's proposed by the Recreation Commission, Mr. Melissa. Um, and the explanation, you know, is okay. Um, but I, I, I do agree with Mr. Hill and Mrs. Rain. Um, I think people will, I will ask, are we losing something in this? Is there some service that's not being provided? Um, so-
As, as, as Chair of the committee, it's my responsibility to go up there and, and talk to why we put up articles and why we, why we feel like this is the right move for the committee in the town.
Yep. Yeah.
Um, I will try to voice that in the, the best way that I can. Um, the town is not losing anything with this change, other than a name of Recreation Committee. And it actually gives the town more opportunity within the next year to actually have realistic recreation in this town, not just somebody who, or not just a committee that says recreation, but only does one thing in town.
Yes. Well, the, the, the only thing, what, what I asked about was it parks?
Parks and fields.
Yeah. So say something about, you know, that we still have the parks and fields. You know what I mean?
That would be, so, yes, but that would be, I would feel that that would be a little misleading because Parks and Fields does not do recreation. They, I mean, well, not recreation in the sense of recreation like that. They do more parks and fields management. Um, and, and they have, you know, different things with all the teams, but they don't really do any recreation per se. It's the youth organizations or the sports that provide the recreation. Parks and Fields provides the facility for the Parks and Fields to kind of, you know, like Voltaire.
So I can absolutely see now the, the reason for the name change. I get that now. I see what you're talking about. It just, I think that people are going to see the committee, they're going to think it's going away, the same way I do.
I, I will ma, I will make perfectly clear that, that, you know, and, and if the board, for some reason, doesn't want to create a new committee next, next year, um, you know, I can, I'll bring that to a town meeting and, and everything. But I think the board is very realistic to the fact that we do need recreation in this town, and that a Recreation Committee that actually focuses just on recreation, um, would be very beneficial for the town. So, I mean, I know that Laura did a great day with my Hanson Day. I wasn't there, unfortunately, I was in Kansas. But, you know, that's something of Recreation Committee. Um, they should do a Hanson Day. They should do a carnival. They should do, um, you know, music down at the camp. Um, they're not losing anything by, by changing the name of the Recreation Committee. We don't have Recreation Committee right now as it stands in our policies and procedures. We have a Camp Kiwanee.
No. And I think that's the point, Frank, is like, this is just accurately reflecting what you're currently doing. So there's already a gap there of no, that nobody has filled. And so we're going to have that strategic planning session. Hopefully that will be one of the subjects that comes up. But even if it isn't, as Jim knows, we've been talking about this, like, conceptually, we haven't actually-
To be honest with you, because, I mean, the town right now thinks that they have an actual recreational entity when they don't. I mean, this is, this is just making it all transparent for everybody to see.
Okay.
The problem is, we do have a Recreation Committee, but it's not doing what the pound expects them to be doing.
Exactly. In theory, we, I mean, in name, we have one, but in theory, we don't.
So that's the thing. The names always set expectations.
Yes.
So what's happening is it's setting up year after year, time after time, for people to be let down because of the name giving their own impression of what it is. I think it'll clean it all up.
And, you know, when you guys create that Recreation Committee for a town ballroom, it's not that. So.
Okay. Um, Article 18, Mr.?
18, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Town of Hanson with gender-neutral wording, specifically by deleting the words "Board of Selectment" and inserting in its place the word "Select Board," wherever those words appear, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Well, I mean, this says it was proposed by the Select Board because it does need to be somebody proposing it. But quite honestly, it was our town council that recommended that this change be made because we've changed all of the other bylaws, um, and all the other, you know, um, uh, regulations for the town. And then there was this one chunk that was in, not in concert with all of that. So we had already voted at past town meetings to change to Select Board. And I've gone on the- on the record a number of times as saying, I am not the one advocating this. I don't have a problem with it, but it's not me driving the buffs on this. So Kate Fierdoff, our town council, had said, you know what, we need to have consistency. If you're going to refer to it, you know, in the majority of all of your other bylaws and regulations as Select Board, you should do it in the zoning bylaws too. So that's really what this is all about. And I know there was a bit of a hubbub about it at the last town meeting, and on, quite honestly, when I read the, I don't think it was the actual change, the explanation was very politically charged, I'll say. I, I felt that it was. And so, this explanation was very simple, you know, and, but honestly, should really just say what I just said, which is that it was a flow-through change to make everything consistent. So hopefully that won't be super controversial. Article 19.
Article 19, to see if the town hall will vote to amend Article 2-11, Section 1 of the Capital Improvement Committee General Bylaws of Hanson by changing the committee's size from seven citizens at large to five citizens at large with two non-voting attendees. The strike through would be removed and the underlined italics would be replaced through the strike through. Do you want me to continue reading this? The Board of Selectment shall establish and appoint a committee to be known as the Capital Improvement Committee, composed of five citizens at large and two citizens at large who will serve as alternates. Three to serve one year, two to serve two years, and two to serve three years, and each thereafter for three years. The town administrator, assessor, appraiser, town, town accountant, and the treasurer collector shall serve as non-voting members. The committee shall choose its own officers.
Okay. And I think, you know, back when this was originally proposed, we didn't have the heel and hearty soul serving on capital improvement, but I think this just gives you some latitude. People are busy, and, you know, if you have a couple people who can't make it, you'll still have the quorum, so.
This is about quorum.
Yep.
Is, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are these things proofread before they're, is this, is this it?
That was, so, I, I made that, I made that article, I'm terrible at writing stuff, but I didn't write that, that was actually the bylaws.
You did not put that apostrophe there.
I did not put that apostrophe there, not only that, but I, I simply took out the, the seven, made it to a five, and then put two, so, yes.
Someone put apostrophe there.
So the bylaws has an apostrophe in it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you shouldn't have an apostrophe, it's not, it's not a possession.
Can we edit this, or is this too late?
Is it too late?
It's, this has already gone to print, right? This is the final
I meant in a town meeting.
Yeah.
You don't have to.
Took out the apostrophe.
With those apostrophes, do I mean that?
Okay. Any further discussion about that? It's kind of
That's going to be the one that holds up the meeting. That's going to be
That'll do it. All right.
Apostrophe.
Article 20, Mr. Heel.
Article 20, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 2-11, Section 2 of the Capital Improvement Committee by, general bylaws, same apostrophe, of Hanson by changing the limit for capital improvement expenses to have a useful life of five years instead of the 10 years listed. The strike through would be removed and the underlined italics would be replaced by the strike through. Section 2, the committee shall study proposed capital projects and improvements involving major non-recurring tangible assets and projects which, one, are purchased or undertaken at intervals of not less than five years, two, have a useful life of at least five years, and cost over $35,000. In order that the town, one, coordinate developmental of capital, of a capital improvement budget with the operating budget of the current year, and, two, develop a capital program including subsequent, the subsequent five years. All officers, boards, and committees, including the Selectment and the Regional School Committee, shall, by the date specified annually by the Capital Improvement Committee, prepare for the committee information concerning all anticipated capital improvement projects requiring town meeting action for the period specified. No appropriation shall be voted for a capital improvement request, requested by a department, board, or commission, unless the proposed capital improvements is considered in the committee report. However, in order to allow consideration of a project reflecting an extraordinary circumstance which must be addressed before the formulation of the next year's capital program, our department, board, or committee may submit a proposal to the Capital Improvement Committee for consideration. The committee must then support a report to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectment with a satisfactory explanation why the proposal was not considered by the Capital Improvement Committee at a time when it could be included in the committee's report. Each of the boards and committees must vote that the proposed project meets the extraordinary circumstance issued.
Okay. I don't, well, I'm not going to even say that shouldn't be controversial, because I don't want to call it.
Easy for you to say.
Okay.
Trying to be consistent.
Article 21.
What?
Yes, apparently we are, we're going to just keep doing bylaws the right way.
Six lines down into Section 2, we're using the word Selectment and the Regional School Committee?
That's true, but you know what?
Four lines from the bottom?
He was quoting from
I was quoting the actual
From the actual original article.
You need to change the bylaws?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Frank, never mind.
Oh, yeah, well, I, I could amend that at a town meeting as well, but taking out the, the apostrophe from the bottom.
Does this, does this have an Article 1 for the May town meeting? It's going to be to change this one to say Select Board instead of Selectment?
No, because we did, he was quoting what was originally in there, and the flow-through changes we already voted at town meeting would impact this. So if you, to the extent you change this, what we already said we were changing would also be a flow-through change on here. So I don't think you need to do it, but we can check with Kate. Don't even make me repeat all of that, because I couldn't if I could. My brain is like addled at this point. Article 21, and, and I don't think you need to read the whole entire thing, just the first couple of sentences, I think, would be lovely.
Article 21, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 1-1 of the General Bylaws of Hanson by allowing town meeting and special town meeting to begin at 6:30 PM Eastern Standard Time. The strike through would be removed and the underlined italics would be replaced through the strike through.
So I, I did talk to Sean about this while he was here earlier today, he said that he doesn't have a big issue with this. Mike brought up a good point, though, about, you know, committees and boards who meet before the town meeting, they might have a little bit of a rush to, to get there. But Sean also brought up another good point that we were just gathering a little bit later, which we usually do anyway. We usually never start exactly at 7:30, we usually start at 8:00. So in this case, if it starts at 6:30, people would start to get there, we gathered at 7:00, and then we'd be done.
Well, I'm glad you guys were able to work all that out while we were
I also talked to Beth as well, she had no issue with it, so.
Great, that's great.
Amazing what happens on the hall.
You guys were getting business done while we were in here, having technical difficulties, so it's good to know somebody was getting stuff done. Okay, great. Article 22, Mr. Heel.
Article 22, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $8,928.50 from free cash to the, for the purpose of purchasing and installing street signs for private ways. Set installation to take place on the public way where it meets with, with the private way, or take any other action relative thereto.
And, Mr. Cohen, was there anything that you wanted to say? I know it's proposed by the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, I don't need to add anything to
Okay.
I was coming from the CBA.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought, I've got a live planning board member here, we'll just, we're going on the spot.
Just for clarification, spurs off of a private way are just going to not say private way, even though they are?
So there are some private ways that are labeled by the developers, but however, there's quite a few that are not labeled, and it's come up quite a few many times, read more recently.
Oh, no, I understand the reason for
Not knowing if they're on private way, so this way, that would probably
No, I'm just, I'm talking about the spurs off, like, I live on Pine Grove Ave, and there's like five or six other roads that tee off of that, a spur off of it. Those, this is inferring that those spurs that are private ways are going to have a sign that doesn't say private way under them.
I think you best bet would be to circle back with Mr. DeBrayis on that. I know he spoke to Mr. Shav about, you know, roads and figured out the cost based on the number of signs that they were going to put up. I think we've just, even in the last, like, since you guys joined the board, we've had a number of discussions about private ways, none of which usually end up in people feeling super happy, but, you know, part of the issue has been, sometimes people just don't even know that they're on a private way, and, and I think that this will help with that kind of visibility, if I'm looking to buy a property, if I'm on a, on a private way, and maybe I just wasn't even really aware, to see that sign is just going to be kind of a little bit of a signal, so. All right, and that's, so you guys voted to recommend, it's a modest amount of money, honestly. All right, to see if, oh, sorry, Mr. Heel, I'm jumping ahead here. Article 23.
Article 23, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $60,000 to be added to the stabilization fund, or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay, and it's not a lot, but it's more than we had before we had the article, so.
It's the intention, not the, the amount.
Yes. And similarly, Mr. Heel, Article 24.
Article 24, to see if the town will vote to transfer $20,000 from free cash to be added to the regional schools capitalization, capital stabilization fund, or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay. And Article 25, bringing it home, Mr. Heel.
There we go. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 to be added to other post-employment benefits trust, or to take any other action relative thereto.
And one thing I would like to do for just a future meeting, Mrs. Green, Green would be to have our town accountant come and talk to us about what OPEB is, what we have in that account, why we should be perhaps paying a bit more attention to it, and all of that, because I think it's a term you hear people toss around, and I'm not sure everybody fully appreciates what it is and how dire it is if we don't have enough money in that trust.
Chief on that, Chair.
Yes.
This is something that I think we've only started contributing to or recognizing within maybe the last five years.
Yes.
And this was one of these items brought to our attention that we should be doing.
Yes.
And so to your question about how much is in there, I'm certainly not going to guess at the balance, but I, I certainly don't think it's a, a rather large sum. I think that we've been able to put aside when we can, but I think those amounts have been consistent with what is asked on the article here.
It was fairly, the last time they got an update, I know it was south of $250,000, which, if you know what our liability is, is, I would say it's a drop in the bucket, but it's not even that, it's like half of a drop in the bucket. So, and, and, you know, and it's, it's going to come home to roost eventually, so it's something we should try to be better about, along with the capital. There are just some good financial management practices that we have to get into the habit of doing, and consistently in the habit of doing, and we've got to find a way to put that infrastructure in place. While you were out, Ms. Green, I did ask if Ms. Fierdoff had any towns that had a project plan for town meeting, and that talked about timelines and roles and responsibilities and all that, and she did provide a couple of copies of those, and one of the things I'd like to do fairly early in preparation for the May town meeting would be to meet as a board with capital improvement, FinCom, and some of the other players, town accountant, town clerk, legal counsel, and then ourselves, to talk about how do we do this better? How do we make sure that we're doing the dry run weeks, weeks and weeks before town meeting? And that the exceptions to the rules are exceptions, and that we're not, you know, this, this actually has gone much better and with, with better timing than we have in the past. But I, I just want to make sure that we're getting a process in place that everybody's agreed upon, and that we start holding people accountable for those deadlines. We had a little disconnect with capital improvement, I don't want that to happen again, and I want there to be clarity about, you know, the town accountant giving capital improvement the dollar amount that they have to work with. I want that, like, those things to be spelled out, so that there's no confusion about who was supposed to do what and when things were supposed to be done. We can and should do better. And a couple of other towns, Kate was able to, like, within minutes of me talking to her about something else, was able to get those to me. So I, I'm always up for plagiarizing somebody else's stuff if we don't have to start from scratch. Okay, so any comments on this? How is everybody feeling about it? I think it's kind of rock solid. I think we know where this, well, we, we may think we know where the discussions will be, but you just never know. Who knew the Thomas Mill was going to be so controver, the wheel was going to be controversial three or four years ago? It just, you don't know what, what will, you know, what will intrigue people. But I think we're in good shape. I want to thank Mr. Donovan, although he's not here, and also Lynn, our new executive assistant, for all of their help in putting this together, the town clerk, our town council, our town accountant, and Ms. Green for the preparatory work that she did before Mr. Donovan got here to kind of get us to where we are. I want to thank, of course, the FinCom members for all of their hard work. I know you were handed a bit of a ticking time bomb, as you always are, you guys are very good at kind of handling that, but we don't want you to have to be good at handling that, that's our goal. And similarly, capital improvement, we appreciate all of the work you guys put in there. So, okay, now, I think we've, we're rounding the corner, at least that's what I'm telling myself, and we're getting to the one-day licenses, liquor licenses. We've got one, two, three in there. I will entertain a motion to approve the liquor licenses as printed in our agenda.
It's a move, second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, fantastic. We've got the town administrator's report. Ms. Green, what say you, one day back in the job?
So it's been a busy couple days. Obviously, when I came back yesterday, I needed to kind of introduce myself again to our new executive assistant and welcome her, and our intern, who's working with us from Bridgewater State College, and really kind of land out, lay out a plan of what I'd like to teach our intern, and how he can help with procurement and grants. I've also, the Community Compact IT Grant is open, that opened September 6th, and they gave us until October 7th to submit the application. It's a very short timeframe, and so I began talking with our IT director today about possible projects for this. This is the year that we qualify for it, and I'm just waiting for the passwords so we can get into the application. I've been working, and going to be working with, again, our Jake, our intern, on beginning the process of filling out the application. And of course, our IT director, Steve Moberg, will have to put in the technical information, but we have until October, October 7th to work on that. And, and then also RFP for the Maquon School. I've reached out to town council to see if, where they are in getting us a template for that. If not, I've also worked, asked our intern to start looking at other towns to see if they have an RFP for a demolition of a municipal abandoned closed building, and so he's going to start that process. So, busy couple of days, and that's all I have to report for today.
And we're happy to have you back, and there are a couple of items that Mr. Hickey pointed out to me, that somehow Mr. Moberg, there was some kind of a disconnect in terms of timing of Mr. Moberg getting a couple of IT articles in, and I'm hoping that we can work with him to see if we might have some other method of funding that, you know, whether it be through the ARPA or ARA. And just so you guys know, for our next meeting, I did ask if one of the agenda items could be ARPA and ARA money, and how we might spend that, just so we're having a strategic conversation, and it's not just getting eaten up with all these little projects, and then before we know it, we've spent 1.2 million dollars. We're probably never going to have another opportunity like this, where we have this dollar amount that, although some, there are some restrictions for one part of the money, the other one is relatively unfettered, and I think we need to be smart about how we're spending it. But we should all talk about what that looks like and what we want to spend it on. So, anything else? All right, well, we have been around the bend and back again, it's been quite the evening, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, the updates?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, did anybody Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Did anybody have committee updates?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Well, with Hanson Day, the 200th Anniversary Committee, which is now 202 Anniversary Committee, finally put the time capsule in. I wanted to thank Jerry Davis and the Water Department for digging the hole. I also wanted to, I have a special thanks for Teresa Coltio from the Board of Health, the Administrative Assistant, for giving me the numbers. You know, with everything that's gone on, with COVID and the pandemic, Teresa put a nice thing in there. And we're gonna have one more meeting, and that will be it. Ed?
Are the, the numbers you just mentioned about COVID numbers, are those inside the capsule?
Yeah. And, you know, with the, with the whole time capsule thing, every, unlike when we opened the 200, we used, there is zero tar. And Liga Marsh was able to get, when we got the time capsule, you could get these special envelopes and packages, and we did all that, and Marcus Lynn did a great job of showing everybody. We actually had kids, you know, throw a shovel full in.
Yep, and sign it all bill, which...
Yeah.
I did wonder whether that was legal to desecrate a, but I didn't wanna get...
You're calling us kids?
I'm sorry?
You're calling us kids?
Yeah, well, no. And then, Council on Aging, the senior center, there is a luncheon with Senator Brady and Representative Kupla on Monday, and I'm pretty sure you have to RSVP if you wanted to attend that. And then, that's it. Did I mention Parks and Fields with the new softball field, Ed Robinson?
No.
Okay. And that's because we probably ran out of time before. That field was dedicated on 9/11, and they started playing fall softball. It was a great showing, but Lower Robinson is now a girls' softball field, which I think is great for the town. That gives us two, and that's it.
All right, and then I'll just make this super quick. We had Hanson Day on Saturday. It was, I mean, the weather just couldn't have been any perfect. I appreciate, Mr. Hickey was there to help, and Mr. Cohen was there. I wrote a little letter, because this is Economic Development Committee. We want to thank those who attended. We had a band, Plymouth County K-9, the Hanson 200th Anniversary, and Lucy, the Police Department's Comfort Doc, which I desperately needed that day, came by. And we had Hanson Historical Society, Hanson Public Library, Hanson Highway, Hanson Police, Hanson Fire, Hanson Little League, Hanson Basketball, Hanson Food Pantry, Hanson Cub Scouts, Soul Purpose, Tag Fitness, Housekeepers of Massachusetts, Hanson 200th Committee, Plymouth County Sheriff, Whitman Hanson Cable Access, Hanson VCA, Shaw's, Hanson Republican Town Committee, Hanson PTO, Northeastern Savings, Carousel Family Fund Center, Green Hanson, Dollars for Scholars, Hanson Basketball and Real Estate Door. And those were all the participating folks, but the main thing, the main shout-out that I want to give is to all the little unsung heroes behind the scenes, not the least of which is the wonderful, talented Mr. Baker here, our facilities gentleman, and then Hanson Highway helped out. Whitman Hanson Regional School District helped us with Tables and Chairs, which was a huge help. And then Economic Development Committee members, Dan Bathelon, Kevin Cohen, and Ken Sweetsy helped set up and make arrangements. Country Rentals donated a moonwalk. Joe Campbell DJ'd for free, and Mr. Hickey helped us with setup and cleanup. So, huge shout-out. It was literally what is, everything good about Hanson was, was encapsulated in that one day. So, just on behalf of the Economic Development Committee, we want to thank all of those people. Did anybody else have any committee updates? Okay, then I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, fantastic. Thank you.